The hearing of the Committee on Local Government, joined with the Committee on Peace, Unity and Reconciliation, of October 8th, 2014, is hereby called to order in behalf of the Committee on Local Government.
On behalf of the Committee on Peace, Unity and Reconciliation, this Senate Committee hearing is hereby called to order.
We would like to acknowledge for the record, the resource persons who are here with us this morning. Okay, the Comsec will read for the record the resource persons who we have here today.
Good morning, Mr. Po. From the BTT, we have Commissioner Pat Matuwati Salapudian. Another commissioner is Melano Yalama from the BTT. For the Regional Legislative Assembly, we have Attorney by Ischara Ibatin Suwat, the legal officer. Board member Kelly Antao, First District, North Cotopato. And the representative of the mayor of the municipality of Carmen, Vice Mayor Moises Arrendain. Former Representative Sinyon Datu Malong of the Maguindanaw Board District. From the Bangsamoro Sharia Lawyers League of the Philippines, we have Gatu Fatahing Blau. And the legal team for the DTH panel, we have Attorney Mohamed Al Amin Julkisri. We also have Colonel Orlando Edrelin, CO6 Infant Development Service Battalion. We also have Father Charlie Celeste Archdiocese of Cotopato, Sister Maria Pedro Villas, the religious working Mary of the Southern Minaanah Province, and of course, the President of Notre Dame University, Father Charlie Elton. We also have Governor Emalu Lala Kalino Mendoza.
Very well, we will acknowledge the presence of the other resource persons when they arrive. I would just like to make a very quick opening statement. We have, on September 23rd, we had in the Senate the first briefing conducted by both panels, both negotiating panels, for the Committee on Local Government. And that was the first briefing that we have had. And it became very clear that it was important that we move to come down to all the affected areas, both in and out of the proposed Bangsamoro region. That is why we are here today and that is why we will be conducting hearings further into next month and probably extending up to next year here in Maguindanaw. Again, this is a very important issue and it is important to know from the locals what their views are as to the effects of the proposed Bangsamoro law in its present form. I believe that we approach this as an opportunity, another opportunity for peace in Muslim Maguindanaw and in Maguindanaw in general. And that is why our desire for peace is so great that we must make absolutely certain that this law, the form that it will be passed in, is the correct form. And that is why it is very important to go into as detailed a discussion and a debate as possible because of, again, our true desire to finally find the formula for the true and lasting peace in Muslim Maguindanaw and in the surrounding area. So with that, I give the floor to Secretary General TJ Lingnan.
Mga kaibigan, mga kaizunan, mga kapwa kong Maguindanawinyo, madalas natin madinig ang mga salitang ito. Para magkaroon ng kapayapaan, kailangan matutunan natin ang paggalang ng isat-isa. For peace to happen, it is often said that we must learn to respect one another. Tanung ko namang, ano ba ang dapat nating igalan sa isat-isa? Ang karamiwan sagot, dapat natin igalan ang ating pagkakaiba. We must learn to respect our differences. Kapag ang ating Maguindanaw, ang pinag-usapan, doon na katuon ang pansin sa ating pagkakaiba. Our differences, magkakaibang kultura, magkakaibang pampalataya, magkaibang pamaranan ng pamumuhay. Tama naman. At isa sa mahalakang bagay, kung bakit malayo na narating itong usapang pangkayapaan sa Maguindanaw, ay ang pagkilala at paggalang sa mga pagkakaiba na ating labangit. Ito ang naging paalala o reminder sa atin ng yumaon nating kaibigan, si Chairman Ustaz Salamat Hasyim. Ang sabi niya, and I quote, "Tayo ay dalawang lahi. May magkakaibang paniniwala, magkaibang kultura, at tinakoy na magkaibang karanasan sa kahit sa sayang." Sa araw na ito, mga kaibigan, hindi lamang ang pagkakaiba o differences ang dapat natin tignan at pakinggan. Sa araw na ito, ng unang pagdinig ng Bangsamoro Basic Law, sa tingin ko, panahon na para mas tignan natin ang pagkahparepareho natin sa halip ng pagkakaiba. It is in this about time we look to what our people have in common and does unite them rather than the difference which divides us. Bumuo tayo ng isang hinaharap. Let us build a future kung saan gagamitin ang mga anak natin ang mga pinakamahalagang taon na ito sa kanilang buhay sa pagkakamit ng kapayapaan at kasaganaan in the pursuit of peace and prosperity. Layunin natin na hanapin ang mga bagay, mga pangarap at mga aspirasyon kung saan tayo nagkakaisa. Pagkatapos natin makita 'yung mga bagay, pangarap at aspirasyon, yun ang pag-aralan natin kung ang mga yun ay kinikilala din at bahagi ng Bangsamoro Basic Law. As we discover the things, the dreams and the aspirations that unite us, let us also ask whether or not those things, dreams and aspirations are recognized and respected and celebrated by the draft of the Bangsamoro Basic Law. Ang isa sa pinakamagandang paraan at pagpapakita ng paggalang ay ang pakikilig natin sa bawat isa. The best way to show respect for one another is to listen to each other. Narito kami ngayon para ipakita ang paggalang na iyan. Tayo na po uli makilig. Makilig po tayo sa bawat isa. Thank you.
The easiest and most orderly procedure would be for us to allow all of our resource persons to present their positions re the Bangsamoro Basic Law. And after that, perhaps we can enter the discussion, but we will let us hold off and allow everyone to put into the record their positions. And that way, we have attended to that part of the discussion and it is here on the record who, what positions the different parties hold. And again, we will proceed with our discussions after that. It is my interest here, it is the interest of the committees or the committees that are represented here, that everyone who has, who would like to speak will be allowed, will be given a chance to speak and to make whatever position, whatever argument, whatever point that they would like to make on the table. And so, we will try to be as liberal as possible in allowing everyone to speak. But again, it would be, I think, it is very much the interests of the, that we first give everyone a chance to give their positions on the questions before us. Very well. I would like to also, I do not think it was ready to the record, but I would like to acknowledge the arrival of the Regional Vice Governor of ARN, Harun Al Rashid Lukman. He has arrived. And I believe it would be a couple that we begin with his representing, the Governor of Jig, Hataman, and the Autonomous Region of Muslim Maguindanaw. And if you are ready, Vice Governor, I would like to vote you for your position on the proposed Basic Bangsamoro Basic Law.
Salamat, mga kapatong. Before I leave, we have the right to represent to the Department of Health and National Safety, Chairman of the Committee on Local Government, and Senator of the District of Guadalajara, Chairman of the Committee of Peace, Unity and Reconciliation. I think we'd like to read through the participants of the Autonomous Region Government. We can start back to us in eight seconds. Number one, the Autonomous Region of Muslim Maguindanaw supports the DTH, MILF supporters in the Bangsamoro. Number two, the ARN Executive Department is currently reviewing the Bangsamoro Basic Law in order to possibly provide ideas that can better enrich the law in its discussion. Number three, the ARN is currently working with the DTH and MILF for transition mechanisms that will possibly provide for non-disruption of basic services in case the DDL is passed into law and later on ratified. Number four, the Executive Department is currently undertaking consultations among our employees to be able to learn more of their ideas, aspirations and concerns regarding the DDL. Number five, we are in the process of complying with the request of the Senate and Congress to do the inventory of all assets and liabilities of ARN. Number six, ARN is trying to fix and settle all obligations and responsibilities with regard to GFIs and employee loans, tax advantages, etc. Number seven, we are looking at the end of November to provide the Senate and Congress with meaningful input and updates. And last, let's assure that the ARN representatives will always be available as resource person in specific topics and participate in forum, conferences and other activities that is support the under take need for peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Governor Lukman. Do we have, have the Vice Governor, have you given the committee a copy of your position papers? It's not, but we have a copy so that we can do it in our record. I believe it would at this point be most useful for the Maguindanaw, the former representative, Sinyon Datu Malong, to give us his views on the proposed law. It will be certainly helpful because of the breadth and extent of his experience on this issue, which he has been involved with for many decades now. So maybe, Representative Datu Malong, if you would give us the benefit of your experience and wisdom on the subject.
The statement of the Under Chairman on Local Government for the Senate. Mr. Chairman, personally, I fully support the Bangsamoro Basic Law, which is fully embedded in Senate Bill Number 2408. Because it is my considered feeling that this comprehensive Basic Law is the comprehensive, I mean the Bangsamoro Basic Law is the comprehensive and lasting solution to the peace and order problem in our part of the country, in the whole of Maguindanaw. Mr. Chairman, we should remember that the peace and order problem has been here for more than 40 years and funding the administration of six presidents of the Philippines from 1973. The Bangsamoro Basic Law now is actually the attempt and hopefully the realization of the fulfillment of the terms of the agreement entered into by the government and the Moro Islamic Liberation Front. I would like to tell Mr. Chairman that in the past, when the government seriously found out that the problem on peace and order has been of such seriousness that it already showed the loss of more than 100,000 lives, our government saw the good offices of some friendly Muslim countries. And in 1976, Mr. Chairman, the organization of Islamic Conference facilitated a negotiation meeting between the government representatives and the Association, the Moro National Liberation Front or MNLF, in Libya, in Tripoli, Libya, which resulted to the so-called Tripoli Agreement of December 23rd, 1976. And when there was already an agreement, fully signed by the representative or the panel of the Philippines and the MNLF leadership, which goes for the organization of autonomous regions in southern Philippines, composing Philippine provinces. And in compliance thereof, our government, by proclamation, organized such autonomous regions in southern Philippines, which was subject to a constitutional process which was referendum and predicit. Then, in that referendum and predicit in April of 1977, it was rejected by the people. And it said, for in Leo thereof, there was the option to have two autonomous regions in Muslim, autonomous regions, not in twelve. And because of the restriction, the MNLF did not take it, did not come out. And so, the problem on peace and order continued. Continued fighting that also claimed more lives. And then, when the late President Coria Tino came in, there was the adoption of the new constitution, which embedded a provision or provisions on the organization of autonomous regions in Muslim Maguindanaw and in the Cordillera. What you want to add, Mr. Chairman? The government or the Congress of the Philippines created the autonomous regions in Muslim Maguindanaw or ARN in charge. But because the terms of what was in the Tripoli Agreement was not followed or was not intended in, the MNLF did not take it. When President Ramos came in as President of the Philippines, there was the revocation in the Crayca facilitated by the Indonesian government. And this resulted to the final peace agreement between the government and the MNLF on September 2nd, 1996. Some terms of the agreement were embedded in a law that was enacted by Congress, which is now Republic Act 1954, amending the Republic, the Autonom Act, Republic Act Number 6734, in order to strengthen and expand the application of the operation of the autonomous regions to accommodate some of the terms of the agreement. Because of that Act of the government and because this was approved, the MNLF accepted the terms. And in fact, Chairman, whom I should argue, accepted to be the governor of the autonomous region. I am saying this, Mr. Chairman, because it is my considered view that when terms of agreement are being implemented to the satisfaction of the parties, then it will solve the problem. It is very fortunate, Mr. Chairman, that today, there is again an agreement between the government and the MNLF, the Moro Islamic Liberation Front, which is now the subject of House Bill 2408 and its counterpart bill in the House of Representatives. It is very fortunate that the Chairman of the Committee on Local Government and the Chairman of the Committee on Peace, Unity and Reconciliation are here to hold this public hearing. Because this public hearing is not only for the Senate or Congress to understand more about the Bangsamoro Basic Law, but it is also for the people in the Bangsamoro and in the provinces or areas which may be affected by the Bangsamoro. That will be benefited for the public hearings to get the proper information. And so, Mr. Chairman, let me just state likewise that this public hearing and the indicated other hearings, that the committees will last hold. And hopefully, the counterpart committee or other committee in the House of Representatives to do will make it easier for the ratification of the predicit that may come after the approval or enactment by the Congress of the Philippines of the Bangsamoro Basic Law. And then, because of faithful implementation of the agreement in the fact that there is such approval, there is such interest in the pursuit of the approval of the Bangsamoro Basic Law as contained in both Senate and House Bill. I think that this will now be the best legacy of the government of the Philippines, the best legacy of the Congress of the Philippines to the people, not only of the affected, of the conflict-affected areas, not only of Maguindanaw, but the whole country. Because this will be a lasting solution to the peace and order problem. This will now give the people not just the convenience of pursuing the individual or collective livelihood, but this will give rise to the economic development of the affected areas which they have sought for quite a time because of the neglect for decades by the government of the Philippines to look after and take care of. Mr. Chairman, I would like to state finally that it should be the gratitude of those who are here, present to the two committees of the Senate that they have come. And hopefully, the approval of House Bill Number, or Senate Bill Number 2408 containing the Bangsamoro Basic Law will be soon enough and it will shake configuration the framework schedule, the schedule of the timeframe that has been agreed upon so that there will be more effective results of what the Senate and the House of Representatives and the government in general is going for the solution of peace in our part of the country in Maguindanaw. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Secretary. Before we proceed, you mentioned the Pagusapan Puninyo, your 96th Agreement that was under the Ramos administration with specifically the MNLF. Now, what in your view will be the nature of the Bangsamoro in relation to the 96th Agreement? Much has been said about the MN's role in all of these, not only discussions, but actual implementation. So in your view, is this a supervising event? Is this an amendment to that? Is that an addition? I would very much want to know your, not only your policy opinion, but even your legal opinion.
Mr. Chairman, it is both.
Yes, may I add also, whatever your view is, Manu Sin, how do we at the end try to harmonize everything?
I was saying it is both. First, this is not the Bangsamoro Basic Law as it is now, is not just an amendment. It is repealing the, which actually took care of some of the agreements between the government and the MNLF. However, many of the provisions that are in Republic Act 1954, I found out to be also incorporated in the Bangsamoro Basic Law. In a way, therefore, this has the effect of not just repealing, not totally repealing, but taking into its own fold those which are really Bangs or which are for the more effective use of this agreement to the peace and order problem and to the development of Maguindanaw.
and to the development of Mindanao, particularly the conflict-affected area.
Specifically, because, uh, uh, as the, uh, when the disagreement was signed, uh, declared the state of independence, when, uh, uh, the, at the, at the talks progressed, there was an uprising in Samwanga. Uh, specifically, and again, when the, um, Bangsamoro Basic Law was, uh, given, transmitted by the President to Congress, again, there was a declaration of state of independence by the MNLF. Uh, it would seem to indicate that the MNLF feels somehow, uh, excluded. Uh, despite your assertion, that the correct observation, rather, that many of the elements of that agree, the 96 agreement are in the Bangsamoro Basic Law. I, uh, it would seem, uh, it would seem because of the pronouncements and the activations of the MNLF surrounding the progress of the, uh, negotiation, which ended up with the agreement and now the proposed Bangsamoro Law, would seem to be, that the MNLF would seem to feel excluded. Uh, is there, it is something that is not technically part of the law, but certainly, any, and if we hope to succeed, uh, certainly, all the armed groups should be in, uh, part of any agreement. Otherwise, they will resort once again to, to, uh, the use of arms.
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, feel that the reason why Chairman Nurmituwari, after the Samwanga unfortunate incident, declaring independence, is because, first, he was disappointed because the government has, uh, entered into another agreement. It wanted that there should be only one agreement. Unfortunately, there had been two, uh, groups of the secessionist movement even during the Jakarta Nguhingon of 1996. There was already the MNLF, which separated from the MNLF for some years before that time. And the negotiation in Jakarta did consider the party of the MNLF. The MNLF negotiating with the government did not even ask the government that there is such another group as the MNLF which should be included in the negotiation. No, that is one. Second, Mr. Chairman, I think that, uh, it is not really correct to fully believe that Nurmituwari has devoted to independence. Because as a matter of fact, he is organization of Islamic Conference to convene the tripartite meeting between the government, the MNLF, and the MNLF for certain reconciliation of some views and for the implementation of some of the terms of the agreement of 1996, which have not been implemented by the government. So in other words, he is still pursuing what has been the effect of the, uh, agreement of 1996. And therefore, that is away from independence.
Therefore, you, in, in your view, it is, uh, uh, there is no need to, um, include, um, in the discussion any further. Because in your view, in your view, the negotiations with the MNLF are final and you have reached an agreement. Uh, and so that there will be no need, in your view, again, for us to adjust the BBL so that some of the, uh, some of the elements of the 96 agreement be included. Again, this is, uh, this is, uh, it is not a philosophical matter, it is a practical matter. Uh, because we have already seen that the, again, the Samwanga uprising and of course, we have heard the pronouncements coming from the MNLF as in the state of independence.
Mr. Chairman, I think the, uh, matter concerning the MNLF can still be considered, not necessarily in the case of the enactment of the Bangsamoro Basic Law, but in the case of the implementation of what is, what are there in the Bangsamoro Basic Law. For instance, when the transition authority will be told upon to perform its duty after the ratification of what is going to be approved by the, uh, Congress of the Philippines, then the MNLF can be members of the, uh, uh, Transition Authority. After all, what the, the part of the MNLF in that Transition Authority is only to have majority of the membership and leadership of the, uh, uh, Transition Authority. But there will be so many other members who will not be MNLF. And I think that the MNLF can be in that other, or other membership in the Transition Authority. And not only that, but in the other implementation of the Bangsamoro Basic Law, when there will be election of the members of the Legislative Assembly or the Parliament, the, the MNLF can be part of the Parliament. And in fact, if there will be majority of them, they can organize the government and have the chief minister of the, uh, Bangsamoro government. But the, uh, the approval of the Bangsamoro is not to exclude anybody else, but only a, an organization for the MNLF. It is going to be an organization for everybody, the MNLF, the MNLF, the non-MNLF, non-MNLF, the Bangsamoro inhabitants, not just the Bangsamoro people who are native of the area during the time of conquest and the revolution, but also the others who have come here and qualified under the law to become part of the government, especially of Parliament.
Manu Sin, that is a good point, maybe because, uh, there are a lot of, uh, uh, misconceptions that this is exclusive government for one group. No, it is clear, for example, like you said, the MNLF can be a member of the Transition Authority. And then, they can participate in the democratic process and be elected in Parliament. And they can even organize Parliament. And so, it is clear that this Bangsamoro is not a Bangsamoro for one group. Very, very important point. This is a Bangsamoro for everyone, for everyone, including the Nomads, including the Christian settlers. I think that's a very, very important point that should be always repeated and driven home. Thank you, Manu Sin, for that clarification.
Uh, thank you, that, uh, I'm sure this discussion will continue um, as the, as we go on. And, uh, uh, it is our intention at some point to include in our hearings the, um, uh, some authorized spokesman of the MNLF to come and to give us their view on the subject. It's just that the subject comes up because, again, of the uprising in Samwanga and its stated purpose. And furthermore, the pronouncement of the MNLF that they will not participate, uh, in the discussions or, and neither will they honor the Bangsamoro, the agreement and the subsequent law, that derives from it. But anyway, again, it is something that we will have to, uh, look into further because the implement, as the implementation of this will require the cooperation of all stakeholders involved. I would like to acknowledge the arrival of the members of the Regional Legislative Assembly, Speaker Danny Ronisintuwat, the Speaker Fortem Mirna Adhil, the Assemblywoman Madul Gandamara, Assemblyman Janima Handi. Also, uh, I would like to acknowledge the arrival of Mr. Norodin Manalo, Executive Director, Regional Reconciliation and Unification Commission of Arms, Duma Maskud, the acting Chairman of the Mindanao Alliance for Peace, Anwar Lucas, President, Catawato Bangsamoro Movement for Peace and Development Incorporated, Roni Giallel, Secretary of the People's Coalition of the Reform and Transformation Inc., Dimnatan Radia, President of the Bangsamoro Executive and Leadership League. So, uh, thank you, uh, Manu Sin, for that, uh, very, uh, for, for that very thorough, uh, background on the history of this peace negotiation. Uh, at this point, I think we can move on to Governor Lala Menosa, the province of North Katabato, for her position, uh, the, the position of the office of the Governor, uh, the government of North Katabato. Uh, Governor Lala, please.
Thank you very much. First and foremost, um, thank you for making it very clear to all of us present here that the Bangsamoro Basic, or the Bangsamoro governor or the Bangsamoro Basic Bill is not exclusive to one organization. It is for all the border community, for Christian and Chinese people alike. We have been partners right from the start. We had our share of consultation. And, um, gentlemen, you can let me speak then, the last bishop of Professor Silla. There were issues raised by our mayor, by our civil society, by our board members. And today, we will, I would articulate that issue. And that is far as the very seat. In a form of resolution, we submitted to you our position, the position of the province, the province of Katabato. In a form of resolution last May, March 11, it was formalized, you know, submitted to the lower house and submitted to the Senate. So this is how involved we are. But nonetheless, allow me to put on record the issues that we raised before the panel when they visited us.
I believe, I believe, that, uh, that you sent it to the House of Representatives.
And the Senate.
We have not really, we did not.
Well, anyway, it will be submitted to you.
Well, maybe you could take us through it. Uh, besides, we need to put it on the record anyway.
Yes. There are seven issues raised. First, for one, the barangays in the municipalities of Allosan, Samen, and Kabakan are not contiguous. It is an issue on contiguous, non- contiguous. To the rest of the areas in the territory, these areas, barangays are within and surrounded by excluded barangays in the said municipality. Assuming they ratify their inclusion, what law shall govern them after the ratification of the BBL insofar as matters which under the BBL set to thing with the Bangsamoro government to decide? So, this is one of the issues. Are they contiguous? I have areas they are not contiguous. Second, we have an ongoing boundary dispute concerning three provinces, Magindanao, Sultan Pudarat, and North Katabato. What law will govern us after the Bangsamoro Basic Law? Third, there are areas not part of the proposed Corps of Territory but are contiguous to the said proposed Corps of Territory. The petition, the inclusion, at least two months before the scheduled ratification, what is the areas in the proposed Corps of Territory where the petition, the petition area is contiguous to opt for the excluded from the Bangsamoro of Territory? Will the petition area still be included even if it is no longer contiguous to the Corps of Territory? Number four. There are other areas not part of the proposed Corps of Territory but are contiguous to the Corps of Territory where substantial Bangsamoro population resides may opt for petition for inclusion at any time. The phrase "at any time" is too broad in scope. It's a matter of concern for us because we have development programs in the area. We have peace and order situation in the area. We do delivery services in the area. And so, we are just wondering how to proceed to this area as mentioned. So to allow inclusion to the Bangsamoro Territory at any time would greatly affect these development programs and delivery services. It would typically affect the LGU chair in the Internal Revenue Authority.
It's, it's, uh, what would you, would you have a proposal? Uh, specific, I will, we'll go back to the, the questions of the non-constiguous areas and then the inclusion. But now, you're talking about the time. Uh, because "at any time" is the one, is the phrase that you find objectionable. Would you, would you suggest that there be a period?
We want to ratify inclusion in this because it is too broad for us.
And in your view, because it would, as you say, it would be a waste of effort for those areas to develop plans which will, and, 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 uh, to make the development plan which will never be implemented because at some point, at any time, you are not sure that maybe those areas will ask to be included and, uh, uh, in the, in the Bangsamoro region. So, would you suggest that there be a time period that we do the election after the BBL and then, I mean, the plebiscite after the BBL? Tapos, wag na? Or pwede pang, pwede pang mag-apply yung mga ibang area for a period of so many years? Uh, ano, ano kayang palagay?
Kaya nga nagtatanong kami doon ng inclusion, the phrase, "at any time, they can opt to join." At ano yun, hanggang kela yun. Kung hindi sa Corps of Territory, at meron siyang populasyon, at ito ay nakapabilis na namin and need to share of them. We have programs in that barangay, particular in that barangay. At gusto nang sumama sa Corps of Territory. Si balan doon sa pap, "at any time." Kaya gusto naming malaman ano idin sabihin nyo "at any time," na yung 10% they come together, repetition, or two-resolution ang barangay. So, ano yun, saan yun? At hanggang saan kela yun? Kasi, ito matutal mo yan.
Well, pag nakalagay "at any time," you did the bill.
That's only one participation, Aby.
I think, uh, I think, I, I think what you are, what you are, what you are, uh, what we are thinking of here is a time limit after, after perhaps the regional plebiscite. And I, I quite understand, uh, having been a governor myself, uh, how that might be, uh, that, that, that might make your development plan, your, your development, uh, implementation a little hesitant if there is always a possibility that you will eventually be included in the Bangsamoro under a different administration and therefore, under a different plan. So, is there, again, is there a time period that you think would be a reasonable, uh, time period into, in, within which any LGU, uh, who, uh, who would like to join the Bangsamoro can still join the Bangsamoro but beyond which, uh, there is a cutoff? Uh, so would you suggest five years? Would you suggest 10 years? One year?
How is that related to the amendment of the Constitution? How, 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 how long can we institute amendment to the Constitution or revise the Constitution? If you make every, I don't know, changing a name of a street takes you 10 years, right? Before you can change the name of a street to another name. But with the Constitution, what is your barometer here? So, kaya nga, hindi sa, hindi, but may tayo in saan sa apat. Kaya nga, you have to guide us to here. I may have some ground, there's no doubt here. Pero nga paka, napak, hindi namin alam hanggang kela.
Yes, but I think, but I think what the Chairman, what we're asking also is that.
Our suggestion.
Yeah, what is your suggestion?
Let me, let me, uh.
We're going to put you on the spot here, but maybe just to move the discussion forward.
We are supporting to any peace program here in North Port or in Mindanao. Kaya nga, eh, brown pala, kaya nga, yung mga plebisito kasama kami na nagti, na kailangan, may plebisito. So, ngayon lumabas yung agreement. So, kagaya na, member ng Congress, isa-isa din natin. Kung hindi sa isa din namin. Firstly, wala kami nakitang, um, maging basihan na, ay, limang araw ba, limang buwan ba, isang taon ba. But allow me to bring you to our last, ano, um, But allow me to bring you to our last, ano, uh, na issue na ni-race namin.
You, you have, uh, seven?
We have, we have. Kasi itong seven, parang koconnect sa ito dito sa barangay. Hanggang bawa.
Alright.
Merong, 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 uh, power generation na gustong gawin sa isang barangay. Nagsimula tayo ng exploration. Tapos, hindi sa court territory. Nagsimula na kami ha? Hindi sa court territory, at gusto niyang sumama. At umuulan na kami, binigyan namin ng endorsement 'yung barangay. Sige, 'yung si, avoid the court, si EDC, sige. Proceed with the development of renewable energy. Then, nagkarantay ng Bangsamoro government. Sabi namin, ano 'yung maging sitwason ng mga programa, o proyekto, o negosyo doon sa areas na maggovern na ng Bangsamoro government? Na dati, 'yung mga nilatag naming mga fundamentals ay amin, at ngayon, mag-aadjust ba sila dahil Bangsamoro government na? Hindi ko, ma, pero, panu nga niya rin kami?
In our first, um, briefing, because it wasn't technically hearing, but in our first briefing, immediately the implementation of some of the principles and concepts became, came into question. We never even arrived at a discussion on the legalities, on very, very, very marginally. Uh, but mostly the questions were the administration. Uh, and again, the formula for the balance of power, which is also what we are talking about, between not only the Bangsamoro government and the Republic, but the Bangsamoro government and the surrounding local government units. Uh, so, that, so although, what you are asking for is a clarification, to make it more, uh, to make it more definite in terms of the time period, and then should there be a change in that, in an LGU? Tama ba 'yung sinasabi ko, pag nagbagwa ang LGU at sumama sa Bangsamoro government, at sumailalin sa Bangsamoro government? Papano ngayon magiging administration nung dating provincial government doon na, uh?
Yes, sir. And for example, meron kami sa centro, no? Nasa Gidnasya, may mga people order concern kami. Paano naming ma-implement 'yung aming karapatan, na bigyan ng ustisya, 'yung nangangailangan, nandino naming teritorio? And yet, nasa loob sa, ng aming teritorio? So again, let me clarify on this. These issues were raised in February. We sent this for the guidance of OPAP. And now just want to put it on record before the Senate and as well as for the members of the House to guide us through for the clarification and all, no? And, 'yung parlima, if the proposed court territory opt to be excluded from the Bangsamoro during the ratification, this area petition for the inclusion sometime later, pwede ba siyang humabol? Kasi meron din kami, nung insulta kami, ilang series tayo, sampoa ba tayo, or more than that, ano? Meron din nasabi na, pwede kami humabol after ng plebiscito? So? So?
Yeah, the, 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 uh, mechanism. Uh, I'll just let you finish everything you say. Of course, I will, maybe the, the OPAP can give us some, uh, uh, guidance on this. Uh, but it's, it's very clear that with the 10%, uh, with the 10% uh, vote of, of, of qualified voters and the resolutions from the Sanggumian, they can opt to be, uh, opt to have a plebiscite, uh, to decide whether or not to be included Bangsamoro. That is the mechanism, that's a very, the very clear mechanism that, that's laid out in the, uh, in the, both in the agreement and in the, in the draft, uh, bill. Yes.
Uh-oh. 'Yung problema talaga namin, ano, kasi may 39 barangays kami. Saan sila papupunta? No? Kaya nga, ang namumuna sa consultation, 'yung aming AEDC resident, Imam Julia Sultan, at the chairman, the summation piece. Sila talaga ang namuno ng consultation. And they're all from the Bangsa-Moro community. So, she wants, um, the two sentiments will come out. So, saan nga, yun 'yung saan kami pupunta pag umoo kami, no? Uh, kaya nga, sinut-entireating namin, kahindi nga ito sa nasagot nung landon 'yung mga miyembro, na ilang miyembro ng panel, nung January. So, ito ngayon, sinulat namin, sabi namin, ma'am, iput-entireating na lang namin, nung hindi niyo masagot, na sige, para magai-dan ang miyembro ng OPAP, ang sinado, at the House of Representatives. And lastly, on the issue of ancestral domain. Meron kami try people, more than 10% sa North Port are try people. Sa Bangsamorong setup, ano sila? Co-equal sila, observian sila. We want clarification here. Tapos, ano 'yung ancestral domain na yon? As against doon sa Destregay? Kasi, well, tapos na 'yung nangyayari ng buwan ba, meron kami mga ninisulbang konsektok, kagaya kahapon. Minsan may away sa lupa, M-I-M-I, M-I-M-N, Muslim Lumad, Muslim Christian, Christian, Christian. Kasi, nagkakaroon ng misunderstanding na, pag Bangsamoro na, 'yung lupa, bangding ka nila. We have packets of, um, rido, no? I'm just glad that the military, the TNT, and all the leaders of Hertford, together with our mayor, we don't go to media anymore, we just do our share, how to reconcile, and let people understand that, pag may titulo, kailangan nagsitohin. Unless, inibenta niya ulit. No? Kung nagkaroon ng fraudulent, um, accusation doon sa lupa, at na malayong pagtitulo, magka-cancelation ng title. Kung okay na naman, then at amicable kayo, magko-confirmation of sale kami. Or, kung hindi talaga, magre-reserve it kami at mag-iisip ng mga titulo. Ito 'yung mga intervention, pero, meron mga packets of, uh, situation.
We, we, we were not able to?
Approved by the, by the, by the Sanggumian palalayagan as of March 11, 2014. And submitted, submitted to OPAP right away, no, to the Senate and to the House.
Very well, uh, I think at this point, siguro, bago natin palampasin 'yung, uh, uh, 'yung mga puntos na raised by Governor Lala, maybe we can ask OPAP, uh, their representative, uh, Attorney Mohamed Al-Amin Julkiki, uh, to answer the point, let's take them one by one. Uh, what, how, the, there is a question again, because of the 39 separate barangays that are non-contiguous. Uh, there are several questions. The governor raised, uh, uh, one, in that, uh, how is the administration of those, et cetera, et cetera. I would like to add another one. Because those 39 barangays were chosen to be included during the plebiscite because they voted to join arms. But because they were not contiguous, they were not allowed to join arms. What will, why is it different now with Bangsamoro? Because even if they, even if they, if the plebiscite wins in those 39 barangays, they're still non-contiguous. And on the basis of what happened in, uh, the armed situation, they were not included in the armed. Why are they now allowed to be included? What changed? What is the difference?
Within thousands of the shared persons. What happened during the plebiscite and how the treatment of the vote for affirmative, uh, during the 2000 plebiscite? The difference for with that case and what we're doing in the proposed BBL is, during the 2000 plebiscite under 9054, I'm relating to Pasena, affirmative votes were stronger at the presidential level. And therefore, even if individual barangay nanalo, but counted against the whole province, 'yung problem for 'yung mag, 'yung discount. So, ganun is case in North Katabato, that in 2001, majority of the vote in the province voted for no, except for these pockets na barangay level. And when we were doing the negotiation, uh, one of the principal considerations for determining what areas could be considered for the first plebiscite was giving expression to the consent of the governed. And in 2001, uh, it was considered that at least in these specific barangays, there have been expression of, uh, consent to be part of an autonomous region, except that the legal framework then did not allow them. And when we were evaluating that position, we looked at the constitution.
Give us some historical perspective, why did they not, why were they not allowed them to join the arm? What was the reason?
Uh, kasi po, the province itself voted no. So, counted against the vote of the province, the yes vote from these individual barangays, uh, lost. So, hindi po sila nakasali. Kasi po, under the 2001 law, hindi po pwede ang barangay level na sumale in an autonomous region. And in this proposed BBL, we are proposing na, even at the level of the barangay, i-allow po silang mag-join sa isang autonomous region.
Why?
Uh, the basis for that, for is Article 10, Act 23.
Wait, to go back, let's go, let's go deeper into the question, not, not, uh, not the law. But what is the reason for that not, for them not being, uh, uh, being allowed? And they pray the, the arm, uh, the creation of the previous law? What were the reasons that they were not allowed to be part? I would imagine it to be something to do with administration, something to do with, uh, uh, the province that they will be under, et cetera. Why is it different now?
Uh, principally po, ang consideration natin before was the provision of 9054 itself. So, the arm law itself, uh, provided that for inclusion, kailangan po province. So, therefore, at the, at the level of the law itself palang, hindi na na-allow 'yung individuals.
During the briefing in Manila, uh, for the Senate, it was also for province, for the Bangsamoro region. So, how, 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 why is it different? That, that why will they be allowed to join now?
Uh, for, for?
Because the reason for them not allowing, not being allowed to join, uh, still maintained. And so, how is it that they, that they, they are now being allowed, whereas before they were not allowed?
Well, just for, uh, reference po, under the proposed BBL, makaiba po 'yung treatment natin, sa core ARMM geographic areas at present. So, sa counting po, sa present ARMM areas, province-wide. But for other areas, like the six municipalities in Lanau Norte and the 39 barangays, hindi po sila by province, by municipality, and by barangay.
Again, why? Why is that, uh, why, when it was not allowed before, why is it being allowed now?
Kasi po, ang, yun po, as I said earlier, the guidance was asking again, the people who voted before for inclusion, if they still want it to be included now. And there, and 'yung impediment formula before.
Before, why are they not allowed to join arms? Two, uh, two days? Yeah, well, you know, that, that, that is, we are leading to the question that the governor brought up. For example, if the 30, some of the 39 barangays eventually, uh, vote to join, how will they be administered? Do they still belong to the same province? Do they still belong to the same city? Because we're talking barangays, uh, same town. Uh, sino ang kanilang, sino ang kanilang, uh, superior Sanggumian? sino ang kanilang superior LGU?
For them to be constituted as independent LGU, sabo. Uh?
Um.
Even for, as geographic area.
So, I would say, I would say that it's possible that we have islands of, an island of, it's surrounded by the province of North Katabato. Then you have an island, that island barangay that is, uh, Bangsamoro?
Yes, sir, ganun po ang, may mga enclave na parang nakahiwalay from the mother unit.
Don't you say there are some administrative issues, uh, and problems that will drop up when you have that situation?
Well, yes, sir, we recognize that there will be administrative difficulties. And fact, marami po talagang, uh, problems with respect to local administration that will really have to be clarified. But, uh, with respect to the effect ng kanilang vote, uh, well, at least on our part, it should be part of the decision-making during the plebiscite, that, uh, part of the decisions that they should be able to make with the consideration of the, mm, local administration problems or issues that might drop up as a result of that vote. In other words, po, it's not enough for them to just decide that they want to join the autonomous region. They also have to be, they also have to consider that the operating effect of their vote would be their separation from their mother unit and that they will be an isolated part from the main D-join and all of these, uh, complications.
If the vote is in, they understand what they, what they are voting for and what the, what the implications of one vote or the other are. Nanalo pa rin ng, uh, Bangsamoro, sumama pa rin sila ng Bangsamoro. The question still remain, how will they be administered? Uh, to put it back in the words of the governor, saan sila? Opo. Nasan sila, nanalo pa rin sila ng pareho from probinsya? O iba na ang probinsya nila? Iban, again, kasi barangay sila, iba na ba ang bayan nila? Anong mangyayari sa kanila?
Well, po, uh, as provided in our agreement with the BBL, they will be under the administration of the regional government, who will have the competence to organize, po, and their own local government unit. So, upon the enactment of the parliament, pwede po silang i-organize into, uh, the, uh, an LGU. Uh, pwede po silang ma, paisalalim sa it'sanire municipality, or whatever the parliament, however the parliament wishes to reconfigure these areas.
And then? Is it possible that they will be put under a town that is within the Bangsamoro area and therefore non-contiguous with that barangay?
Opo.
It's not the, the question that I raised during the hearing. Again, our local government instincts are coming out, uh, mga, uh, and we are trying to, we are trying to figure out, um, the, we have to assess really what will be the effect of that and see if it is a practicable thing, return to, um, island. Uh, I, I, I'm looking for the map, uh, that was given us by OPAP during our briefing para makita 'yung 39 barangays, actually, and, uh, talo that are away from here. Anyway, uh, attorney, perhaps you can move on to the other, uh, issues that were raised by the governor. Uh, about the, if the, uh, the, the language wherein another LGU may, they join Bangsamoro, may join Bangsamoro at any time. Uh, and this presents, again, practical problems, uh, as, as laid out by the governor. Maybe you can, uh, give us some, uh?
Uh, actually, according also to suggestions and the, and there is also further debate later, it might, it, there, there might be a suggestion to put some sort of an interval or a time limit. Pero, just to respond to dun sa clarity issue as of now, 'yung at any time po is still not defined. So, therefore, we understand it as at any time, opo. Opo, so as of now, wala po siyang, uh, timeframe or time interval. So, it's still open. And, uh, anyway, 'yung suggestions man, cause of litigation, if, if it's practicable and feasible to put a, an interval or a timeframe, kasi as of now, wala pa po 'yung at any time.
So, the, the, OPAP is, uh, open to, uh, uh, an amendment in that regard, where we could put a time limit?
Well, well, the position naman po is, we will always defer to the collective wisdom of our legislators in this, in this.
Okay, well, it's something again that, uh, we need to define. Now, another transition problem that was raised by Governor Lala. If a province or an LGU decides to join Bangsamoro later on, what will be the transition mechanism for the local provincial government uh, to the, uh, Bangsamoro government now?
Well, actually?
Let's say two, three years down the road.
Opo. So, actually, ma'am, that should be addressed by the local government enactment. Katulad po, and similar to the provisions on the BPA, the transition authority that's provided here, uh, dapat in that local government enactment, there should be a provision there, uh, respecting transitioning. For example, for, for future LGUs that would join under the opt-in provision, uh, there should be a provision in that law that should address the transition, uh, problem. Otherwise, uh, 'yung provisions po under the current local government code, since this is an existing municipality outside the territory, should also apply territorially. So, either we have 7160 provisions with respect to transitioning, or the local government, uh, code that the parliament will enact, or both po.
Only 7160 does not address the, uh, situation wherein, um, a LGU, uh, will join. 7160 does not address the situation wherein, um, a LGU, uh, will join a, uh, autonomous region. Uh, because, uh, I think the assumption when the local government code, but we are now, uh, introducing a, uh, for, for changing in the administration. Then, is it something that was, uh, that was, um, intentionally left open for that, for the Congress to, uh, to try and, uh, put, uh, uh, a more definitive, uh, mechanism?
Well, as of now, sir, there is language for that in proposal, so I think that is an open. Uh, but, uh, with respect to how we, the thought process, uh, when this was negotiated, really, when it comes to local administration matters, po, as an executive, as an exclusive power of the regional government, so if the, the situation for the OPIN should be accommodated in that local government code, since the mother law the BBL provides for it and pwede naman po 'yung maglagay ng definitive, uh, arrangements for that, so that then, pag nag-inact na po 'yung parliament, may guidance sila from the BBL to that effect.
Proceed, I would just like to acknowledge the arrival of Doctor Per Sia Danz, Chairperson Regional Executive Association of Arms, uh, Ramon, uh, Yazu Ramon Adyong, the Majority Secretary, Leader of the Legislative Assembly, Datu Ramil Dilanggalen, uh, who is the Deputy Governor from Magindanao, former Mayor of Nodorn Kabutalan, and Baifati in Swat, uh, the Philippine Red Cross was also arrived. I'm sorry, they...
About the indigenous peoples and ancestral domains...
Ah, yeah, I see.
Opo, I just like to address that. So just to clarify po, ma'am, uh, when we talk of indigenous peoples, uh, they are absolutely treated as equal, like, like as we have in, in our present system of laws. Lahat naman po tayo pantay-pentay, as said earlier, this is not just for one group, this is for everyone. Actually, in our proposed BBL, po, our brother indigenous peoples are, have been given their, uh, the due recognition ang kanilang special status as minority group. And therefore, marami po ditong mga affirmative, uh, uh, provisions which favor 'yung ating mga I.P. brothers. So with respect to, halimbawa, the ancestral lands and their claims to these, uh, to these territories, lahat po 'yan provided in for, in our basic law. And this, uh, pag ito po ay naawarden ng title, these qualified as vested rights and under our framework agreement, vested rights should be respected, opo.
What about the provisions specifically stating that the IPR law shall be respected? What do you think of that?
Opo, actually, in this proposed formulation for the proposed basic law, so actually, IPR itself, although the word IPR does not appear, 'yung kanya naman pong nilalaman, have already been incorporated and integrated in various provisions in this, uh, proposed BBL. And what we're doing here is giving enough space for our future parliament and even, uh, the participation itself in that parliament of our brother I.P., no? For the formulation and tracing of their own indigenous peoples' law, uh, na dapat magti-take off from the basic principles contained here. So it should, uh, contained in that, uh, enactment later also.
Thank you, uh, thank you, uh, Governor Mendoza, uh, thank you, Attorney, um, for that quick exchange. Pero, marami, marami pa siguro ng mga detalye. It really is in the details that, uh, we have, uh, that, that discussions have been, uh, quite, uh, lengthy. Um, I would, uh, like to acknowledge again, uh, before we proceed, the arrival of Doctor Abdul Manan Gayak, the Chairman of the Magindanao Alliance for Peace, Datu Antonio Kinok, MILF Spanish, Raheem Kutsu, the Member of Third Party Monitoring Team, President of UNYPAT. Um, I would, at this point, I think we can, since the Speaker of the Regional Legislative Assembly has arrived, uh, perhaps if, uh, he is, uh, ready, the Speaker, uh, Roonis in Swat, if you would like to, uh, uh, give us your thoughts and views on, uh, the proposed Bangsa Moro basic law. Thank you, Speaker.
Parang salamat. Honorable Chairman of, uh, this committee, Senator Marcos, Senator, uh, Inggonah, Atsasi, mga kasamaan, and Dito Po, the Assemblyman Adyong, Assemblyman Adhil, Assemblywoman Adhil, Assemblywoman Pandi, and the Assemblyman Atomik Andarma Kadamra. At sa mga stakeholders, salamat alaykong, warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Una po sa lahat, ay naistong ipaabot ang taos puso naming pasasalamat sa Senes Committee on Local Government. Sa pagkataloon ito ng panahon sa atin ngayon, upang tayo ay magigyan ng pagkataon, na ilahat at ipaabot ang ating pananaw sa panukalang batas sa Bangsa Moro, o Bangsa Moro Basic Law. Ang Regional Legislative Assembly ng Arms ay sumusuporta sa panukalang batas ng ito. Our longing for peace in our homeland sees a silver lining upon the filing of the B, containing the BBL. As a matter of fact, to show our sincere support, we have detailed our suggestions and recommendations to the BBL, which in our humble opinion will enhance or strengthen the proposed law. These said suggestions and recommendations are incorporated in our position paper which we have submitted to the honorable country. Sa kabuan po, labis ang aming paghanga sa panukalang batas ng ito, na nagsisiguro na sa magandang kinabukasan para sa ating mamamayan. Naist rin pong samantalin ang pagkataon ito, upang manawagan sa lahat, na makilahok sa diskusyon, upang maringin po ang bawat sektor. This is our time to do our part as a proud Bangsa Moro. Maraming, maraming salamat po, at wassalamualaikum, warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Maraming salamat, uh, Speaker in Swat. Uh, uh, nandito sa akin 'yang inyong position paper. At, uh, ang isang issue na, uh, na, na binabanggit ninyo rito ay tungkol na sa empleyado ng Arms. Kung ano ang mangyayari sa mga empleyado ng Arms? Kung ano ang kanilang mangyayari, will they be separated from the service? Kung kilaba, will they be incorporated into the, uh... Uh, to give a partial answer to the question, uh, nung tinanong namin nga ito sa, sa una naming briefing, ay, eh, actually, ang natanong namin ay hindi tungkol lang sa empleyado, kundi tungkol sa mga ahersiya. Kung ano ang mangyayari sa mga agencies of government ng Arms? And, um, uh, the explanation that was given to us is that the Arms, uh, the, the new Bangsa Moro government, the parliament will decide which agencies to keep and which to abolish, and reorganize those agencies that will continue to exist. We never got, hindi namin, hindi namin naabot 'yung, 'yung kung paano ang gagawin nga sa mga empleyado, kung ano magiging status nila. So perhaps we can, uh, go back to Attorney Ju, who keep me about that, uh, on that issue. What will be, ano mangyayari sa mga present na, uh, government employees na nasa ilalim ng Arms, uh, pagkatapos ng, uh, pagkatapos ng reorganization by the Bangsa Moro Parliament? Ang, uh, ang tanong siguro is, kung ma, halimbawa, kung maabolish? O kundi, kung ma-reorganize ang isang agency, ano magangyayari sa mga empleyado? Will they maintain their city service status, their pay grade, et cetera? If the agency is abolished, ano naman ang mangyayari dun sa mga empleyado ninyo? I think it's the, are the two key questions na tinatanong ng lahat.
Uh, actually po, 'yung, uh, kasama na dun sa, uh, plan or transition plan na binugo ng, uh, ARMM Regional Government ngayon in partnership with, uh, parties to the agreement, 'yung magiging, uh, placement po dun sa mga empleyado. So may binugo po tayong transition plan which will include, uh, the, uh, the details, no? Of how, of what will happen to the employees. Uh, uh, dun po sa ating huling meeting on normalization, na, na, na iron out na po 'yung details for this transition arrangement. Um, so wala pa po as of now, hindi pa, hindi pa po nahammer down lahat ng details with respect to, uh, how or what will happen to the employees, except that, under this agreement, um, the central government, meaning national government, commits to, uh, uh, create, uh, transition plan, including 'yung mga packages and, uh, 'yung due, uh, um, compensation in cases of employees that might be separated or would opt for early retirement. But kung makakaano precisely or who will qualify, would still be determined po in a transition plan that's still being hammered down.
So problems if we make these provisions clear? That, uh, with regards to the insecurity of tenure of the employee?
Well, opo, kasi that, that is anyway an entitlement of these employees. So if a provision like that would be...
And if they are qualified, they will be retained?
Opo, but, uh, what we ask right now is, uh, hintayin lang po muna 'yung proposals ng transition team, ironing out the details, kasi there is an ongoing, uh, consultation process with, dun po sa mga employees.
Where, there is a transition, there consultation process with the employees?
May, may binugo po tayong transition team, na Arms, Government, and...
The Regional Vice Governor is here, is there a consultation ongoing with OPAP and the employees?
Yes, this is Senator. There is, there is ongoing consultation between and among the employees of the autonomous region.
Dapat matapos 'yan before we, before we pass the law? Should we begin incorporate agreement in the law?
So, uh, actually, nabuo na po 'yung, uh, membership 'yung team, and, uh, there are now in the process.
Can I give you matapos?
Uh, unfortunately, wala pa po akong information, kasi nasa initial stages pa po ito. But, uh, we will surely, uh, I think we could ask Deputy Es...
Yeah, the Attorney would move?
Senator, there will be a first meeting between GTH, MILF, and OPAP on the October twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. Uh, one of the issues would be the employees. Uh, actually, we are trying to reach out to CFC and CFC Arms, uh, to provide us with, uh, rules and guidelines on how these things go about and what the employees should, uh, receive in such, uh, in instances when this happens. So, uh, it's an ongoing process. We are also talking to not only Arms, uh, employees, as they are, as just employees, but we are also talking to, uh, associations in ARMM. Uh, for example, the, uh, the leadership of the Regional Executive Association of Arms, which is, Aset Danz is here, uh, she would also want to voice out their concerns as employees. So we are talking not, uh, not only, uh, we are talking to our employees, not just as employees, but through their associations as well.
I suggest you finish that by the end of October, but, uh, whatever has been agreed upon, we can, we can, ano, we can, uh, include it already in the BBL.
Are there any proposals on the table already as to how to handle that, uh, transition? Uh, yes, sir, uh, we will be meeting, uh, GTH, MILF, and the ARMM. We'll be meeting once a month, and we will be tackling it by, by topic. Uh, for example, the first topic would be, uh...
I'm sorry, did you say once a month?
Once a month, but this will be at least two days, the whole day.
Yeah, but October, November, December, January, so you only have three more meetings this month, this year?
Uh, we have been talking for a long time now, sir, uh, Senator. But, uh, with, uh, with the suggestion, we can maybe, uh, increase more the meeting with OPAP.
I, I would suggest that, uh, simply because proposed, uh, month for the holding of the plebiscite is March. So we will have to, that, that is what they, what we are hoping to do. But, uh, for such a complex question, don't... What are the other issues that we will be discussing?
Um, first, sir, the, the issues that are requested to be discussed, uh, uh, initially, there has been a request in relation to block grants. They wanted to know what are currently the programs in ARMM? What are the programs, uh, not downloaded in ARMM? So that the whole issue on block grants can be, uh, uh, discussed further. So, uh, there would be a topic for that. And, uh, there would also be issues on frontline services. In case, uh, the law is passed and ratified, what can be done so that the frontline services that is being delivered in ARMM currently, uh, would not be stopped immediately? And it would flow, uh, smoothly from, uh, during the time when, uh, the ARMM is abolished, as ratif, when ratified, and during the time that the BKA will take this, uh, take, take the place of the leadership of the Bangsa Moro.
Leadership of the Bangsa Moro?
Well, very well, as you can imagine, uh, the both committees, uh, both the Adho Committee in the House of Representatives and our committees in the Senate will be very, very interested to know, uh, what are the results of those meetings? And, uh, I hope that you, they will transmit to us immediately, um, whatever subjects are covered, as they are covered. Uh, huwag na nating antayin matapos lahat. To go down, I, I am, uh, I have in front of me the position paper of the Regional Legislative Assembly, uh, summarized by the Speakers in Swat. Uh, there is also a, uh, a point that they raised, that is raised by the Legislative Assembly, that the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority would assume office before the expiration of the term of office. Uh, is, uh, is that, uh, something that we can in fact do? Uh, because it is, it is enshrined in law that the term, the terms are of a certain length, and we cannot, uh, arbitrarily cut them short. So again, uh, Attorney, if you would, uh, like to, uh, explain to us how this, uh, how this is supposed to...
For allowing the, the coming of a transition government even ahead of the, uh, uh, the expiration of an elected term is because of the abolition of the offices po. So because the ARMM itself is deemed abolished upon the repeal of this organic law, uh, the terms of office, alright, that comes with, uh, of, that comes with the autonomous region are also deemed abolished. And therefore, in the, in the, and so that basic services are not hampered and also to ensure transition, we will install a transition government. So that is, that is the process and the reasoning behind, uh, that mechanism.
Uh, in that, in the question of parliamentary, parliamentary districting, and the districts, um, this will be altering the, the boundaries of present congressional districts. Uh, so these are, again, uh, is this, are these amendments to the laws that are creating this district? What, how, how is this supposed to be handled? Because the definition of many of those districts are actually contained in the, no, the, the definition of congressional district is contained in the constitution. Uh, so, eh, what, maybe, why is this not a constitutional question? Uh, it's probably the question. And in addition, in addition, I'd like to find out why they are appended already to the, to the BBL? Put after this, this, this new district, and what is their basis?
Well, uh, to answer for the first question of the Senator, uh, first, we have to be able to clarify that parliamentary districtal representation in the House, hindi po 'yan pinataas ng ating BBL.
True, true, to be clear, but you will overlay a different, but here, the parliamentary districts will not be the same as the congressional district?
Hindi po, the parliamentary districts are solely for purposes of representation in parliament. It will not affect for representation in the House. So we are appointing parliamentary districts only for parliamentary district representatives in the parliament. Um, tapos, to, uh, as in connection na din po to the question of Senator Inggonah, actually, the appended, uh, appendix, no, on districts was the original, uh, the, uh, appendix or a proposed, uh, annex to the original BBL as proposed by the Transition Commission. So I think, uh, there are members of the TC here who might be able to enlighten.
Ay, gumawa'y in Transition Commission?
Opo.
Disappointment, can I, I, I just would like to, to, to make my comment. Uh, a citizen of Lanado, um, we must see a cluster. Because, uh, the municipality of Masio, which belongs to the congressional district of, the first district of Lanado, too, was included in another cluster, uh, with, with a member of municipalities belonging to the second district of Lanado, too, which happens to be my area, uh, and registered voter of, of that particular cluster. Uh, it seems that the, the, the people of Masio are denied of their, uh, of their, uh, right of passage. on the part of the first district of Lano de Sur. It's strange that this district, since Masio belongs to the cluster of municipalities dominated by, by the second district. And secondly, there are three municipalities from the second district where I come from, which was committed in the clustering of, uh, of these political parties. So, I just would like to be clarified, Mr. Chairman, is, is this merely a clerical error or it was committed by, by deliberate uh, uh, act by the, by the, uh, famous of this, of this proposition?
Ang nakaka problema yata is nagbabag, iba 'yung districto, iba 'yung parliamentary district, iba 'yung congressional district. So, that is going to be a source of uh, confusion, again, in the administration side. Uh, also, it will be very difficult if... I, I knew the, uh, this will be complicated, but I did not think that uh, it would be that... Anyway, bago tayo mabaha, let's uh, move, move on quickly.
Mr. Chairman?
The difference, halimbawa, uh, in, in, in the representation of the district, the congressman, the congressman can represent a town in the, in the House that he does not represent in the parliament. Do you not see that there might be a, 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 a problem there?
I am also would communicate this to the Transition Commission. As I said earlier, the, the appendix that we have now was, uh, was the appendix that was proposed much earlier. So, there has to be the calibration and true thinking uh, that has to be adopted in the apportionment of parliamentary districts. Uh, I don't know what the status of that is now with the TC at the level of the Transition Commission. And uh, well, as far as OPAP is concerned, as you have heard, the points and concerns that have been raised with respect to the district, we are very much open to start conversations again on how the territory of this district is. Hindi na po marinig.
So, Mr. Chairman? Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, uh, I am Gia Rahman along with Abion. The majority leader of the Regional Assembly, I would like to comment on the, on the specific, indeed, appendix of the basic law, which is the redistricting, the proposed redistricting in the parliamentary district in the Bangsa Moro. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I do believe, we understand the, the, the intention of the OPAP, of the draft for of this bill, that they want to have a separate representation as far as the membership in the parliament that is concerned, that it is not similar to that of the congressional redistricting. But uh, if we retain, if we retain the appendix, a certain parcel of the basic law, this would be a classic case of placing the cart ahead of the horse. We do believe that the BBL will empower the parliamentary, Bangsa Moro parliamentary, to enact their version of their local government code. And we do believe that it's part of, um, respecting the autonomy which is yet to be given to the Bangsa Moro government. Uh, we should also give them the power and decide among themselves whether they want to change the redistricting as far as this, uh, their, their, their uh, membership of the parliament that is concerned. Meaning to say, Mr. Chairman, we should not, uh, spoon feed, for example, or preempt the, the powers that will be granted to the, the Bangsa Moro government. Instead, we should enhance them and give them power to decide among themselves whether they want to have redistricting or not. As of now, Mr. Chairman, aside from creating confusion on the ground, because we believe some election time... 'Yung mga barangay po namin sa Lano de Sur, as what the regional vice governor stated earlier, magkakatabi-tabi po 'yan. If we, if we arbitrarily change the boundaries, political boundaries, it will create confusion in the ground during the election season. Now, I'm summoning po is, fixidite the, the passage of this, this bill. We should retain the status quo, meaning to say, we have a, a district now. In my, in our case, we have two districts in Lano de Sur, multiple representation. If the, if the, if the bill seeks to add, uh, uh, add additional members to fit the, call the, the required number of sixty, for example, in the parliament, it is easier to just add another one. For example, in my case, because we're multiple representation, just add two in, in first district, and add three, just to fit for the required number of, uh, members in the parliament. But not entirely to change it arbitrarily. And let the parliament, for example, if once it is, it's already in place, let the parliament, Bangsa Moro parliament, to decide among themselves whether they want to have redistricting or not. That is part of the powers that is granted to them by this BBL, because they are in power to enact their own local government code. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
What you are saying is that it is confusing if we change the district, the district boundaries, uh, especially with the, at the, at the ground level.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
At the ground level. I, I am saying that what we are doing here is, not only are we changing, we are adding another boundary. There is a parliamentary boundary of the district, and there is the uh, boundaries of the congressional district. Just to, to, to try and shed some light, what will be the basis? How, how, how do you, how will the parliament decide? What is the guiding principle on the creation of a parliamentary district? Is it the same as the constitution that says one hundred fifty thousand, and that the, that will be a district? Or uh, will you, again, uh, maybe the, the, the number of the MPs proposed in the parliament? Uh, what is that number? Uh, then you will have to find that number of parliamentary districts, you will have to define that. So, let's start with that, what is the proposed number of MPs?
Alright, so under our proposed uh, Bangsa Moro Basic Law, Mr. Chairman, uh, the number of MPs is set at sixty, six zero, and forty percent of that sixty uh, is allocated in apportion to district representative or district parliamentary members. So therefore, there are total of twenty-four seats in that parliament reserved for... Hello, reserved for district uh, representative. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may be allowed to just uh, respond to some of the uh, points raised earlier. Actually po, there is a provision in our proposed uh, BBL about redistricting, precisely allowing parliament to determine on their own later how the apportionment of parliamentary districts should be. And uh, the guidance provided here is that uh, this district should be based on population and geographic area. This is in section eight of uh, Article seven of our proposed BBL. So, and so, I would just continue reading. Shall be apportioned based on population and geographical area, provided that each district shall, as far, shall comprise a far practicable contiguous compact in adjacent territory and should have at least a...
I'm sorry, uh, could you tell us where you are, secular?
Section eight, Article seven, sir.
Section eight, what page is it?
Article seven on the Bangsa Moro government. Uh, page, page thirty, sir, of the, of Senate Bill two four zero eight. Page thirty po. Page thirty, first line, on page thirty-three.
Okay, uh, section eight, yeah?
Opo, only this sixteen. So, uh, there is a provision in our proposed law that allows the parliament to, to, to the parliamentary district. Uh, there have, we, we have received uh, several concerns with respect to the attach, attachment or appendix on redistricting. In fact, so, uh, there, as mentioned also, there have been municipalities and barangays na naomit in that uh, redistricting, which I think is a result of oversight. And clearly, therefore, meron pong need to revisit the appendix on redistricting and re-listen thoroughly on how to do it. And at this point, uh, we are open, you know, to discuss further po, how to do the initial redistricting uh, for the first uh, parliament. And uh, just to connect, for the later uh, years, there is a provision here that precisely allows for parliament to do further redistricting later.
Let's see here, uh, unlike in the constitution where it has a, a limit to the number of districts. Um, maybe you can point out if there is such a, such... They, they, the, what is specified here is the, is the percentages. Uh, this sixty will be forty percent, party representative fifty, and secular representatives of ten percent. There is no indication as to how many members there will be. Uh, do we have some, uh, again, some guidance on that?
Yes, sir, sir, Mr. Chairman. For the first parliament, uh, there will be twenty-four district representatives, because the first parliament, as provided in this proposed BBL, will be sixty. And forty percent...
Why, why did you say sixty?
Uh, in, uh, section four po. That is on page thirty, line twenty-six, Mr. Chairman. The parliament shall be composed of at least sixty members, unless otherwise provided by the parliament.
Okay, se- section four competition, there also the six numbers, yes, Mr. Chairman. Very well, um, there is no limit?
There is no limit.
You can create new districts, parliamentary districts?
Yes, sir, provided that it complies with the percentage requirement here.
Okay, how will the boundary limits be decided of each district?
Supposedly, Mr. Chair, that should be decided by the parliament, that, because they are given the power here to do this.
What will be the basis?
Ah, opo, that is in section eight po.
Section eight?
Opo, on page thirty-four. Uh, thirty-three, Mr. Chair, on page thirty-three, section eight. Uh, that for purpose of, that I'm reading in the second paragraph, Mr. Chair. For purposes of redistricting, parliamentary districts shall be apportioned based on population and geographical area, and that each district shall comprise a far practicable contiguous compact in adjacent territories, and should have at least a popo- a population of one hundred thousand.
Uh, it is a similar mechanism to what they do with congressional districts?
Opo.
Yeah, but we have, we have to examine very closely this idea that there are, not only are we moving, we are not moving, we are not moving district boundaries, but we are creating new boundaries. And uh, if there are going to be twenty-four new districts, then many of the, many of the affected areas will have, essentially, uh, will, will... Will ha- if, if there, there is a possibility that the borders will be crossed? For example, one parliamentary, is it possible for one parliamentary district to encompass towns from one congressional, from two different congressional districts? It's a, it's two different congressional, where you can... It will, it will probably happen, right?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Yes, sir, that's, that's what happened.
Parliamentary district will contain towns that, that are, that belong to two different congressional districts. The Sanggulian, the board members follow the congressional district, but uh, this one, in this case, I was trying to, to, to think about it in terms of that, uh, what will be, uh, how we will handle it. Um, again, this is something that will bear a lot more discussion uh, as to the mechanism on how, how, when the, when the parliamentary districts are created, how is it going to be administered? Um, so they, they will have... So every, but every, 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 every resident will have two, a district, a, a district congressman and a parliamentary uh, district uh, MP. Very well, that's Mr. Chairman. Okay, uh, at this point, uh, I would like to, to call on uh, Datu Kadafiblaw, the Vice President for External Affairs of the Bangsa Moro Sharia Lawyers League of the Philippines. Datu Kadafiblaw, you have the call.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, with all the rahman and rahim, salam alaikum warahmatullahi wa barakatuh. Uh, first of all, uh, we, the Bangsa Moro Sharia Lawyers League of the Philippines are, uh, are happy that we are invited for this very important occasion, as we see as our future for the Bangsa Moro, especially the Moro people. Uh, first, we have some, uh, uh, points in regards to the Bangsa Moro judicial system. In fact, we have really prepared our manifesto support from our league, uh, which we can recommend to the, to this honorable committee for a further uh, uh, study on regards to this proposal of Bangsa Moro basically. Uh, if you may, I would like to read or pass to the committee, to the secretary, or uh, our manifesto, if you may. Or uh, perhaps before you do that, maybe you could read it into the record? Yeah, for the record, no, I, I will make it short. For the record, uh, the Bangsa Moro Lawyers League of the Philippines Incorporated manifestive support stands for the immediate enactment of Bangsa Moro Basic Law. The members of the Bangsa Moro Sharia Lawyers League of the Philippines Incorporated express its stance and full support for the immediate infringement of invasion Bangsa Moro and transition authorities. As the society states, to help the establishment of the regular Bangsa Moro government consistent with the provisions of the entire peace agreements entered into the government of the Philippines and the Moro Islamic Liberation Fund, referred to as the parties to the seventeen years of peace dedication. Number one, the Bangsa Moro Sharia Lawyers League strongly appeal to the both House of Congress to facilitate enactment of the Bangsa Moro Basic Law, and thereby empowers the Bangsa Moro parliament to enact the Bangsa Moro. The local government code, the civil code, the administrative code, electoral code, judicial base code, that legal standard code. Another special law to be applied by the Sharia court judges for cases involving Muslims without prejudice to the application that is issued regional trials of the Philippine law for cases involving Christian citizens residing within the proposed Bangsa Moro territory. Number two, the league also requests both the House and the Senate of the, and the House of Representatives to act positively on the proposed plan to strengthen the Sharia courts in Muslim-dominated provinces in Mindanao and expand the jurisdiction over cases so that they shall not be confined to the application of P1083, or known as the Code of Muslim Personal Law. And authorize the under the basic law to assume jurisdiction, jurisdiction over criminal, domestic, civilian, liberal, liberal, political, and administrative cases also involving parties who are Muslims and other concerns as being provided in the Bangsa Moro Basic Law. Number three, the Sharia high court will be empowered and authorized in order necessarily to conduct Sharia bar examination within the Bangsa Moro territory in coordination with the Supreme Court and the National Commission for Muslim Pilipinas. The annualizing contingency plans to be appropriated for the central government and the Bangsa Moro government in all respects the financial problems and difficulties that may be confronted with the actions of the examiner. And number four, the existing Sharia district court must be authorized under the basic, uh, the, uh, basic law to grant a natural commission to qualified Sharia councilor lawyers who have agreed to at least regular court or, uh, the same, uh, plant other prime state universities or colleges. And uh, to be brought about the oral mode of disposition and conveyance of real property as existing practice in rural communities in the, due to the absence of the notary public in such rural communities. While all regular lawyers do not reside in these communities. In fact, they ought to reside in community and service not only law offices in urban, uh, in urban, in urban areas, such as Catapati City, General Santos, Marawi, San Blanca, Tagadiah, and Double City. Lastly, the Bangsa Moro Sharia Lawyers League of the Philippines finally abstain and gratitude to the Honorable Senator Bonfong Marcos and Senate Committee, the Senate Committee Chairman, Local Government, and the Honorable Secretary Dingona, Senate Committee, Republican Committee, and the Committee on Peace and, uh, Innovation and Retrásulation for having conducted hearing consultation in the local land in connection with the proposed Bangsa Moro Basic Law, known to the House Bill number four nine nine four and the Senate Bill number twenty four zero eight, which is now standing both in the House and this Senate deliberation and for enactment. on this Senate deliberation and for enactment. We have pulled out, this is a favorable action leading to an one and for all for the thinking old and politics in the South. Salamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Thank you very much, everyone.
Uh, thank you, yes, I should just scan it because, uh, my hair is coming. But, uh, okay, thank you for that, Datu Blau. Uh, we will, uh, uh, we shall propose specific proposals, especially on the, uh, on the application of Sharia law, uh, in the Bangsamoro area. Okay, well, uh, that, we also have the... Uh, okay, good. Okay, so now we move on to, um... Uh, Mr. Rahim Payapat, the Chairman of the Bangsamoro Youth Leaders Forum. Uh, you have submitted the position paper, but again, for the record, uh, please, uh, take, uh, at least the highlights of that position paper.
Alhamdulillah, rahmanir rahim, salamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Uh, first of all, Mr. Chairman, uh, accept my respect and courtesy. The honorable members of the Senate, the public of the Philippines, and behalf of the Bangsamoro Youth Leaders Forum, BNYLS, would like to register our full support to the Bangsamoro Basic Law submitted by the President, President of the Bangsamoro Government, and the opportunity for our people to live in justice, dignity, and prosperity in this part of the country. Mr. Chairman, we therefore call on the leadership of the Senate and the entire people in this country to support and rally behind the Bangsamoro Basic Law. We would like also to call on the leadership of the Senate to enact a basic law with full conformity to be achieved a MILF comprehensive agreement on the Bangsamoro, Bangsamoro. We completely believe, Mr. Chairman, that a water down, again, that a water down BBL is not only risk, but also unacceptable to our people. Mr. Chairman, finally, we would like to ask the Senate, your committee in particular, to fast track the enactment of the Basic Law so that we will have an ample time, the BBL will have an ample time to legislate laws necessary for the institutionalization of the Bangsamoro new political entity. Mr. Chairman, again, I already submitted my position paper or our position paper. To summarize, we would like to register in this hearing the full support of the Bangsamoro Youth Leaders Forum to be proposed Bangsamoro Basic Law submitted by the President in the Senate. Thank you so much, Madhu Al Taillat.
That is the desire, uh, uh, it is your position, that, and it is the language, that, uh, which is not, that we should enact the BBL with full conformity to the GPH, MILF comprehensive agreement that the Bangsamoro signed on January twenty-five. And you are, uh, you are careful to say that a water down system would not succeed. What, what would be your definition of full conformity? Or what would your definition be of water down? How far, in your opinion, can Congress go in amending the provisions of the proposed BBL?
This BBL is a result of more than seventeen years of negotiation between the GPH and the MILF. And the comprehensive agreement on the Bangsamoro is an expression of the Bangsamoro people for freedom and self-determination. So, we do not want to repeat the history of the past, Mr. Chairman, wherein after legislating a law which is supposed to, to resolve a conflict like the Bangsamoro, a bubble byolit, no? Meaning, there will be recurrence of another conflict. In fact, we, the Bangsamoro youth, want to resolve this issue once and for all. I am a Minna Sami generation, I, another age of conflict, no? We do not want a Sami generation, there will be another negotiation and there will be another provocation of love and to resolve this conflict. So, that's what you mean, Mr. Chairman.
As a practical matter, what do you think we can change and what do you think we cannot in the agreement? It is a long and very complicated proposed law, and the function of Congress in these hearings is to see, uh, is to, is to fine-tune the, for any, for any draft, uh, draft bill or proposed law. Uh, and generally speaking, we are, we in Congress have very few limits as to what we can amend, uh, in the, in, in any proposed law. However, as you, as you, as is mentioned in your position paper, there is a comprehensive agreement between the MILF and the government of the Philippines. Uh, so, it is, in your view, necessary that we are, uh, presumably the BBL as proposed is, in your view, in conformity with that agreement?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so, again, so that is, that, that puts some limitations on Congress as to how much they can do in terms of amending and adding, removing provisions from the, from the, uh, BBL. Uh, but presumably, the reason that, that's why we're still having hearings is so that we can see if there are possible amendments, uh, to the, to the BBL. Uh, again, on what subject, in your view, will it be acceptable for Congress to amend or to add or to subtract from the proposed BBL as written out?
Uh, the provision of the draft BBL, I'd like to ask the Senate to, to enhance it further, meaning to add more so that the Bangsamoro will have, um, uh, will be satisfied on this, uh, proposed Bangsamoro Basic Law. Uh, this is very unusual for us to be constrained to a certain degree by a previous agreement, uh, which we, if we stray very far from, uh, then the, the agreement, uh, becomes null and void. Uh, because that is, that, uh, that is generally, the scope of amendment that is allowed us is very wide. Uh, and, uh, again, there are very few limitations to, to the, our normal conduct of hearings and amendments and debate on the draft bill. But that is why we are always asking for guidance on how far, uh, we can change the, uh, the, the proposed bill. In any case, uh, that is again, a question that, uh, will have to be more thoroughly answered, uh, uh, perhaps in the subsequent hearings.
At this point, uh, we would like to, I am in receipt of a resolution from the Regional Executives Association Armed on the, on the proposed, uh, BBL. And we have, uh, the chairperson of the Regional Executives Association of Armed in Dr. Per, Per, Percia Dance. Uh, Dr. Dance, perhaps we could, uh, hear from you uh, to sling the resolution that, uh, you have made and that you have, uh, passed on to, uh, the committee. Uh, Dr. Dance.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. The question that you would like to raise to the honorable members of this committee, sir, is this. What will happen to the more than thirty-three thousand armed workforce with permanent appointments and the rest on contract while you have just approved the ARNM budget for twenty fifteen in the amount of twenty-five billion to be transferred to the Bangsamoro Transition Authority? These armed budgets were prepared and approved by Congress, and I suppose it consists of the salaries of the armed personnel, the MOOE, and the capital outlay. Also, we would like to put forward the continuity of the giving of supplying services, the, uh, provision for the safeguard and the protection of the government's properties, office buildings, other assets, equipment, various government financial and personnel records and data of respective department agencies at the regional level, at the provincial, and at the municipal level. We are talking of schools set in five provinces, two cities, and one hundred sixteen LGUs. Not only that, we are also talking about all of the people in the, in the employment of the ARNM in these areas. So, we would like to propose for a more humane hiring and rehiring policy of the ARNM executives and employees given the discrimination against the ARNM. And in the event that the hiring or the rehiring is mandated, the following order of priority shall include the hiring first of the permanent and qualified personnel, the holders of career executive service eligibility and career service executive eligibility who are qualified for the positions, the executives and employees who have not reached the minimum fifteen years creditable service and who have not reached the retirement age so that they may still complete the requirements under the retirement law and be qualified to enjoy the benefits of the said law. Third, the temporary personnel who will be qualified, who are also qualified for the position and the casual personnel who are qualified for the position. We also would like to propose for the observance of the retirement law for those who will qualify to be retired and for the adoption of a fair and reasonable separation incentive gratuity pay. We have just also written the GSIH for the updating of all the personnel service records of the more than thirty-three thousand employees of the ARNM. And last, but not the least, the standardization of position items and salary grades of certain positions so that they will be the same with the positions at the municipal level. We are talking of the department heads in all the LGUs. That is, in my capacity as Chairperson of the Regional Executives Association of the Armed, allow me now to address the Honorable Chair in my position as the Assistant Secretary and the Officer in Charge, Regional Secretary of the DILG. There is a saying that the sin of omission is worse than the sin of commission. What we fail to do when we are strictly bound by law to do so. We would like to request the Honorable Chair and the senators involved here to capture the concerning issues concerning the twelve LGUs in the ARNM that do not have the internal revenue allotment and the fifty-eight barangays that were approved by the Regional Legislative Assembly. This is now the time to be able to capture that. What would happen to this non-era LGUs and barangays? We hope we were not consulted when this BBL was made so that it was never factored in. And so, as Officer in Charge of the DILG, I feel that it is high time for this honorable body to factor this in so that once and for all we would be able to address the issues concerning the non-era LGUs of the ARNM. There are eight in Magindanao and four from Basilan and fifty-eight barangays out of the two thousand four hundred ninety barangays in the ARNM.
Uh, I'm sorry, eh, what, what kind of LGU are they, are they?
Municipalities.
Okay.
They are, they are, they were created by the Regional Legislative Assembly.
In, as, as is the, as is, uh, the, uh, mechanism in, uh, other local governments, uh, the, the, this is akin to barangays, for example, being created by a Sanggunean, which are also non-era. Uh, and, uh, they are not recognized by the, uh, DGM as part of the era computation of the barangays. So, is this the same situation that is happening? These are non-era, but they were created by the?
The Regional Legislative Assembly.
Therefore, what is the mechanism in the armed? Because in the local government code, the Sanggunean-created barangays will be funded by the Sanggunean that created it. Uh, is that not a similar situation to, uh, the, the LGU, the barangays and the municipalities where the Legislative Assembly or the Gov, Armed Government will be the one, um, since the legislature of the armed government was the, the, the body that created it, would they not be the one to provide also the funding of the, the, of the LG, of the different LGUs that were created by the Legislative Assembly?
Insofar as the LGUs' creation is concerned, the criteria, the requirements on the land, um, income, and the population do not conform to the seventy-one sixty, uh, of the local government code. The population has been reduced. But in the case of, uh, Pito Pipo municipality, which is an era of ten million, the mother municipality, Pito Pipo, was given six million, of the ten million was given six million, and Albarca, which is the daughter municipality, which is supposed to get four million, did not get it at all. So what happened to the four million? Well, the mother got six million, the ma, the daughter did not get anything at all. So, uh, we would, I think this is where we would like to place it, uh, um, to put it into the proper context.
But again, uh, again, eh, the DGM, when it is not by act, when an LGU is created, divided, uh, separated, it's not done by an act of Congress, then it is the Sanggunean that created the barangay, uh, that will provide the funding for the new, the new barangay. The old barangay, which was created by act of Congress, will that, which was already created by act of Congress by recognition, uh, over the years, will, it's, it's, the Sanggune, the barangays that are created by act of Congress are provided era, but those that are not created by act of Congress are not provided era uh, by the national government. So again, the source of the LGUs created by the Regional Legislative Assembly, uh, where is the funding supposed to come from?
We have our own version of the local government code, which is MMA Act two twenty-five. This will now, uh, operate, this will now give credit to the idea that the Regional Assembly is entitled to create barangay or municipalities. Now, in the, uh, in the, in the version of local government code, which is MMA Act twenty-five, it is different from that of the? that of the requirement set by the Local Government Code passed by Congress in such a way that the population requirement in the land area is reduced. Now, the Regional Assembly, every time the Regional Assembly pass a measure, it is treated as a bill, as an act, as a law. The observation of the good Chairman, with regard to the passing of ordinances by the sangunian panglongsood or panglalawingan, is that different from that of the Regional Assembly because every time it passes a resolution or a measure, legal measure, it is treated as a law. And therefore, since the Republic Act 1954, this is an organic act, it cannot be repealed without the plebees, without the ratification of the people, and it is part and parcel of the Constitution. So, we believe organic act should not give precedence over that of a special law. And the treatment of the power of the Regional Assembly as far as its connection with the Republic Act, the DGM should at least treat us similarly with that of Congress. Because it is stated that once we divide and create municipality, it should be DGM who finance the necessary administrative, financial requirements of the barangays and as well as any municipality created by the Regional Assembly. And this is the gray area because according to DGM, they will not follow, they will not be dictated by MMA Act 25. They will go with what the Local Government Code passed by Congress dictates, Mr. Chairman.
So, there is no provision for the funding of the new LGU as created by the Regional Legislative Assembly?
None.
No, Mr. Chairman, it is already implied in the organic law because our basis is the organic law, 1954.
I understand. What I'm asking is in the organic law, what is the provision for funding of the newly-created LGU created by the Legislative Assembly?
I think it should be implied, Mr. Chairman, since the DGM is the one who handles the financing of the LGU. It should be the DGM in this case.
But the DGM will not recognize?
I think so, yes, Mr. Chairman, because of what the Executive Director stated earlier, there are about, I think, 59 barangays created all over the region that have not been provided with ERA.
So, what has been happening in the years since the creation of these LGU? But what is the funding?
What they do, Mr. Chairman, is they try to settle that in the municipal level or in the provincial level. The provincial, I think, this is just a guess, Mr. Chairman, some areas, some barangays, the ERA are being divided by the mother barangay and the newly-created barangay, where the barangay is being passed from.
Sir, I would just like to clarify regarding the issues of the non-ERA barangays. Despite the explanation with our good colleagues from the Regional Legislative Assembly as provided by 1954, considering that there is no longer funding coming from the DGM, what the Regional Legislative Assembly did for this year is to provide the non-ERA barangays with a funding of 500,000 a month, so that is 72 million pesos for the whole year, for this year of 2014. So, despite the non-support of the DGM, there's already support coming from the Regional Legislative Assembly for this year, and I think next year there will also be that.
For the meantime?
Yes, sir, for the meantime.
How much?
500,000 a month, so that is 72 million a year.
500,000 a month?
Yes, sir, a month. Because unfortunately, sir, the local funds of the region is not that big, so we are trying to, per municipality, sir.
Per municipality?
Yes, sir, per municipality. We are providing them with 500,000 a month support.
These are the municipalities that are created by the Regional Assembly?
Yes, sir.
What about the barangays?
The barangays, we don't currently have any provisions, but we are working on it, sir.
So, all the municipalities receive an annual budget of 6 million?
Yes, sir.
6 million pesos?
Yes.
And the barangays, again?
There's no provision for the local fund.
So, what has been happening in the past years? They are not receiving any funding?
Previously, DGM was providing these non-ERA barangays with support, but there was a certain period in time when they stopped providing the support, sir. So, that was the moment in time where ARNM, under the administration of the Regional Governor Muti Bataman and of Siparuni Sinwat, started to provide these municipalities with support, sir.
And the proposal is that the bodies, the LGUs that have been created by the Regional Assembly, will be included in what? The national ERA or in the budget of the Bangsa-Moro?
According to, on the BBL, there's a provision that MMA 25, the provision that was used to create the municipality, is still present in MMA, in the BBL, so those non-ERA barangays and non-ERA municipalities will continue to exist in the Bangsa-Moro.
These regional, the LGUs created by the Regional Assembly be included in the DGM calculation for ERA?
Yes, it should be captured in the Bangsa-Moro Basic Law. Difficult to impress on them governance, but there is no money to talk about. What governance can we be exact on them when they don't have? The case of Pito-Pito alone is an example of this, of from an original 10 million, the mother municipality got 6 million, but we cannot do that for as long as they are not given the support. And we would like that the BBL, through your Intercession Chair, because you are the Local Government Committee Chair, we hope that this will be captured.
...Bangsa-Moro government in terms of deep stability in the community. Because in the Bangsa-Moro, we have a lot of problems. For example, the localized conflict happening in the community, this popularly known as RIBO. Based on our study, this localized conflict contributes a lot on the vertical conflict happening in the autonomous region of Mindanao, and not only in this region, but other provinces in Mindanao. So, with that, thank you very much, and hope that the Basic Law for the Bangsa-Moro should be passed.
You're expressing the desire that Congress immediately enact the proposed BBL. You have no questions as to its language, as to its content, that might be a source of debate and a source of amendment in the final form?
Well, Mr. Chairman, proposed Basic Law, in the sense, by the Office of the President, is a result of the thorough study of the member of the DPT, and so with the Office of the President. So, that I don't have any... There is a possibility that may occur of a problem. Because I believe, sir, that the money and thorough study of legal-minded people under the Office of the President, and also with the Bangsa-Moro Transition Commission.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Manalo. At this point, I would like to call on Dr. Ramil Dilanggalen, who is the Deputy Governor for Magindanao, and is also the former mayor of Magindanao.
Thank you very much, Tagalan Galang, National Governor. If you remember me, I was the man who early pronounced your candidacy as Senator in North Cuta Batu. However, I would presume that the coming of the Senator is partly for the hearing of the BBL. But first, I'd like to extend the regards from my governor. The parents of Magindanao, actually, never departed from the consultation with the DPH representative and the E-Mailok. But, kasama po si governor sa Lanau del Sur. Sa buluan lahat po ng consultation, hindi po humihuwala ang probinsya ng Magindanao. In supporting yung programa po ng National Government, dito po sa utapin pangkapayapaan. So, first, na islambo magbigay komento dun sa pinag-usapan kanina regarding dun sa creation ng mga municipyo. Because I have been a mayor for seven years over non-ERA municipalities, and I believe we brought this matter to your office. So, ang nangyari po dito sa mga non-ERA municipalities, yung dalawang mga municipyo dito, where it was created, meron po kaagad ERA dito from the National Government. Ang pinagtatakakan lang po ng marami, bigla itong inalis, even mayong repak na kasama po sa general proportion at yung mga municipyo na yun, pinabait po inalis ang kanilang ERA. But mayroon talaga dumaan na puwahan at umaasa po ang lahat na sa darating na mga panahon, especially pag nagkaroon ng Bangsa-Moro government, maadrep po yung mga problema na yan. At sa islambo magbigay komento dun sa mga previous speakers, na lahat po ng mga mamamayan dito sa probinsya ng Magindanao, ay nagse-support po sa BBL. Nunay, yung BBL na magbibigay ng katarungan sa bawat sector, yun pong BBL, yung mga provisionang BBL na magbibigay pansin doon sa dapat na pansinin, sa darating ng mga panahon. Kaya kung kaya't kami po, sa probinsya ng Magindanao, ay nagkaroon din ang reaction ng ating governor regarding dun sa redistricting, na nagkaroon ng anin na distrito, yun pong probinsya ng Magindanao. But I believe that the RLA have already submitted the manifest tungkol po doon. So, sa probinsya ng Magindanao po, umaasa po ang lahat. Kami po ay patuloy na se-supporta sa lahat ng programang pangkapayapaan. So, balik kami po ay magsasalita, hindi ha, nung mga nasasakopan ng probinsya ng Magindanao, doon po sa mga provisionang BBL, na alam namin na hindi po makakabuti doon sa ating mga kababayan. Maraming salamat, at magandang hapon po.
Sir, sana po meron kang mga itinutukoy na provision para mapag-aralan ng senado, ng komite, at ng senado, yung mga proposal na pagbabago dito sa proposed BBL?
Siguro po ang aming pinagdutunan ng pansin. Kami po ay naniniwala na makakabuti na mananatili yung congressional district dito po sa probinsya ng Magindanao.
Sir, mananatili yung?
Yung dalawang congressional district ng Magindanao, instead of gagawin pa nila o matatanggap yung naka-provision ng draft Basic Law, which is submitted by Congress, na magiging anin. Why? Why kapag magkakaroon po ng napakaraming confusion din sa ating mga mamayan? But instead na magkakaroon ng redistricting, dapat dadagdagan na lang yung mga representative doon po sa dalawang distrito ng probinsya ng Magindanao. I am referring to the first district and second district of Magindanao, who has three representative in the assembly. Dapat siguro dadagdagan na lang yung, huwag na lang gawin yung anin na distrito ng probinsya ng Magindanao.
In other words, para matundan yung boundary ng suggestion niyo, is para matundan yung boundary ng congressional district?
Yes, sir, Senator. Mas maganda po at madaling...
The proposal mo is, I think, bawat, each congressional district gagawing dalawang parliamentary district? Tama bang pagkarinig mo? Ganun ba ang iyong ipinopos?
Ganito po, sa draft Basic Law, na submitted sa Congresso at sa senado, ang gusto nila mangyari doon, yung dalawang distrito, congressional district ng Magindanao, who had the first and second district, ngayon po sa draft Basic Law, na submitted, gusto nila maging anin na distrito, which I think the requirement is 100,000 of population. But we maintain our stance, especially with young leaders, the alin, na dapat gawin mananatili na lang doon sa dalawang distrito, first and second district, na ginawa ng Congresso, but instead, the Basic Law gagawin na lang siguro ng Congresso, na dadagdagan yung mga representative doon sa dalawang distrito na yun.
So, ang suggestion mo nga is that yung congressional district, magkakaroon ng congressman na umuupo sa Manila? Pero meron ding dalawang, meron ding dalawang district, sa isang congressional district ninyo, gagawing dalawang parliamentary districtyon, na may dalawang representative na umuupo naman sa Bangsa-Moro Parliament?
Sir, ganito po kasi, sa congressional district ng Magindanao, dalawa, but sa parliamentary proposed yun sa Basic Law, gagawin mo lang anin? So, yun ang nais na ipaliwanag ng alin at sa ibang liberato dito, doon na, as you have asked me, kung ano ang dapat na hindi maamint dun sa draft Basic Law, no? So, yun ang gusto naming sana, mananatili tayo doon sa dalawang congressional district, at saka sa parliamentary, ginawa nilang anin, huwag na lang sana, dalawang distrito na lang, pero dadagdagan na lang nila yung representative na tatlo bawat distrito doon sa congressional district, yun sa parliamentary district.
So, balik sa parliamentary district, na pareho ng congressional district, tatlo ang MP na manggagaling doon sa distrito niyon? Is that the proposal?
Maririten po, sir, yung congressional district. Pero dyan kasi sa draft Basic Law, may rin silang redistricting dyan. Ginawa, gagawin nilang anin na parliamentary district, yun pong probinsya ng Magindanao. So, ang proposal, ang proposal namin, huwag na lang sana, but instead, yung ating dalawang distrito, eh dadagdagan nilang nila ng dalawa pangrepresentative. Kasi every district dito sa...
Pero yung congressman hindi umuupo sa Bangsa-Moro Parliament?
Hindi po, hindi po.
Kaya nga, ang kailangan ay dahil pag pinaghati, anin ang Magindanao, anin ang parliamentary district, ang parliamentary representative.
But is in the local, sir, sa local, ginagawa siya sa draft Basic Law na anin, but hindi congressional district, we have to...
So, bawat distrito gagawing din parliamentary district, pero hindi shahatiin, buo pa rin yung distrito, pero tatlo ang parliamentary members from each district?
Opo, anin. Ang pagkaraatan, ano?
Bawat, kasi dalawang distrito niyon?
Opo.
So, yung dalawang distrito, anin ang kukunin na parliamentary representative? So, sinasabi mo, huwag na palitan yung distrito, yung congressional district, instead, gawing tatlo ang representative ng bawat congressional district?
Siguro gawing lima. Kasi tatlo man, ang senator, tatlo po ang representative sa local judge assembly, every district. But instead, sana dadagdagan na lang nila yun, yung representative...
Hindi nababaguin yung distrito? Yun ang main point mo, huwag nabaguin yung distrito. Pero para abutin ng Bangsa-Moro Parliament, yung number ng 16, yung bawat congressional district, magkaroon na lang ng tatlo na representative galing dun sa congressional district?
Opo, opo.
That's interesting. Papaano ngayon yun? Kasi pag tatlo ang nagre-represent sa isang distrito, shahatiin ulit yung district within the... Kasi sino ang magre-re... Papaano kung hindi nag-angri yung tatlo? Papaano pag nagdebate sila sa parliament, sino ang masusunod? So, ang mangyayari palagay ko is that kung we maintain, we retain the boundaries of the congressional district, shahatiin na naman yun sa tatlo para maliwanag anong bayan, ang kaninong MP, et cetera?
Ganun sana man yan, sir.
I understand. Okay, I now understand. Okay, meron pa ba? Do you have more na suggestion tungkol sa palagay ninyo na dapat tignan? Tignan pa at pag-aralan pa dito sa Basic Law, Bangsa-Moro Basic Law?
So, we cannot stop any...
So, we cannot stop any, all, uh, people of, uh, different sector na magbigay ng komento. Sana po maintindihan ang bawat sector na hindi po kami antay, kami po ay supporter ng Bangsa Moro basic law. Subalit na isang namin, yun pong makatarungan at makatutuhan ang mga provision para sa ating mamayan. Maraming salamat.
So, I now I'll give the floor to Father Infra.
Thank you very much, Honorable Senator. Uh, the university has been conducting also a lot of talk shows to inform people about the BBL, proposed BBL. And at the same time, conducting also a lot of researches. And, uh, the university also has been, uh, the venue for a lot of conversations and discussions about BBL. So, at the moment, uh, we are not giving a position because, uh, it appears that Notedin University has really become a venue for all groups to discuss about BBL. But, uh, hopefully, we can give, uh, research-based, uh, representations of the ongoing, uh, uh, Bangsa Moro proposed law. That's what we are doing now, so we're really documenting also a lot of the discussion goal. So, the position really is for Notedin University at the moment to host a lot of discussions. And then hopefully, uh, in a research manner, uh, we can present, uh, a research proposal, a sort of, uh, uh, documentation at the same time, uh, representations of the different groups. That's what, that's what we plan as a university at the moment.
Okay, uh, who will be, who will be participating in the discussions that you are organizing? And how big, how, how is it organized?
At the moment, uh, we have organized already the Bangsa Moro Law Propose Bangsa Moro Talk Shows, uh, hosted by experts and, uh, by the different stakeholders already. And, uh, the first part, uh, conducted was already about, uh, the power sharing. So, we divided it into five sections. We have finished already the three sections, uh, based on the Bangsa Moro proposed law. And hopefully, by the end of October...
Which sections have you finished?
Uh, policing, uh, judicial, policing, and, uh, the environment, power sharing, governance, fiscal autonomy.
Which ones have you finished?
Yeah, those, uh, those, uh, uh...
I thought you, you said something about tatlo?
Yes, three clustered into three, those areas.
What are the three, what are the three clusters?
Uh, I think the first one was about, uh, governance. The second one, we talked already about, uh,
Governance?
Judicial, policing...
Judiciary?
Yeah, judiciary and the, uh, security and policing, we discussed it already.
Just one subject, judiciary, security, and policing?
Yes, we clamped that into one. So, we will be discussing, uh, three more, uh, two more areas, yes.
I only have two here, governance?
The other one, uh, I, I, I...
Okay, could you give us some of the, uh, conclusions that you arrived at? What are your, what are, what is being the result of your studies and discussions on these subject matters?
Uh, for example, the one raised already, uh, about, uh, the contingency, for example, uh, having a Bangsa Moro entity in a municipal entity. Uh, just to say, for example, Senator, uh, we have discussed also the problematic area of, uh, uh, an administrative entity within an administrative entity, for example, you know, just about the space already. That's one of the area that we think, uh, is really contentious.
Uh, as an input to our deliberations in, uh, in...
Uh, I, I could not emphasize at the moment, but, uh, we have discussed it already. But we will just be giving, uh, Honorable Senator, the outputs of, uh, the collected, uh, and the outputs of the talk show.
Very well, okay, so we will await that, perhaps you can put it down in written form and send it to, uh, to the committee?
That, that's what we plan to do, Honorable Senator.
Thank you, Father.
Welcome.
Uh, in our part, we are in first phase of the agreement on the 1996 Final Case Agreement. And which is, uh, uh, properly implemented as, uh, we have observed. But there are some provisions in the P2 which, uh, uh, the case of, uh, some members of the MLLE, who has been, uh, who has not, uh, integrated into the Armed Forces of the Philippines, which is the, uh, implementation of the Special Regional Security Force. So, that's, uh, what, uh, the, uh, the, some members of, uh, the MLLE combatants are with the force. Implementation of the P2, which is the creation of the, uh, Special Regional Security Force. And, uh, second is, uh, uh, with regards to this, uh, BBL, on the article, uh, ten of the Public Order on Sixty, particularly on sixteen fifteen, which is retention security. And allow me to read the provision, the retention security of the Bangsa Moro...
I'm sorry, Major, section, what?
Sixteen fifteen.
Five zero?
Uh, one five.
One five?
Yeah. Defiance on security. Et cetera.
What page is that on?
Uh, sixty-nine, sixty-nine.
Okay.
Uh, which is, uh, under sixteen fifteen, retention security. The retention security of the Bangsa Moro shall be the responsibility of the, of the central government. And the central government needs to eat a Bangsa Moro command of the Armed Forces of the Philippines for the Bangsa Moro, which shall be organized, maintained, and utilized in accordance with national laws. Qualified in half council of the Bangsa Moro, shall be given preference for assignments in the said Bangsa Moro command. So, uh, I would like to, uh, comment on the word "me", "make" it. Because once, uh, "make" it, it is the, uh, within Hindi, atsaka within, uh, "make". But however, the, if the central government shall, or will create, shall create a Bangsa Moro command of the Armed Forces. So that, uh, based on the, uh, final, uh, the nineteen ninety-six Final Case Agreement, uh, we have, uh, five thousand five hundred, uh, uh, personnel of, uh, the MLLE integrated into the Armed Forces of the Philippines. And that should be maintained if, uh, if this is the case. So, we can also, uh, uh, make a, uh, a mechanism on how to observe, on how to observe the, uh, the members of the Bangsa Moro Islamic Armed Forces, which is not qualified to be the members of the police. Because based on the qualifications of the police, it is very hard for the, uh, combatants of the DIA to be, uh, to be a member of the, uh, police. So, for that, the Armed Forces of the Philippines, uh, could be able to meet, uh, mechanism or, uh, to, to address the issue on the, the issue on the combatants of the, of the MLLE. Because we do believe that, uh, most of the members of the MLLE are, have not gone to, to proper schooling. So, how could we, how to address this combatants of the, of the, uh, DIA? If we could not, uh, have the proper, uh, being for, for them?
Tulungan natin, idan natin supporting additional schooling and maybe bring them up to standard para... Because we have to maintain the standard, uh, that we, that we, that we have for all of those who are entering the ASP, both at the officer corps and as an enlisted man. But also in the police, it is the same, uh, it is the same, uh, uh, the same idea. That para naman, pag sinabing police, you can expect a certain level of training. So, uh, because it would seem to be, um, it would, it would seem to, to be having a, what you, what you could call a special rule, only from, from, from those who are coming, uh, from, who are previous combatants, who are being absorbed into the uniform services. So, pap, I, I, would that be, would that be a, uh, a good mechanism that you, that, that whatever is lacking in terms of schooling or training from those combatants to be absorbed into any of the uniform services, that we provide, uh, additional supplementary training and schooling for these African so that they can be absorbed?
Some other qualifications, uh, na wedyon, hindi na kailangan yun. As long as you are the members of the MLLE, pwede kang papasok. But in this case, maybe, uh, according to that we have heard, that before na magenter ka, you have that qualification as a police, you have that lapulcom and other, uh, qualifications. But if, uh, the pre-entry of, uh, this, uh, police of the Bangsa Moro, iwo wedyong mga qualification, doon na lang sila sa training. So, maybe that's, uh, a good, uh, uh, point to help those, uh, members of the, uh, Bangsa Moro Islamic Armed Forces to go in the police force.
Is that we will adopt the same mechanism as the ninety-six agreement specified?
Yes, sir.
That as long as they are identified as combatants who would like to be absorbed into, uh, the uniform services, that we waive the requirement, some of, some of the requirements that we normally impose on those who are entering the services?
Yes, sir, sir.
Okay, that, uh, that is noted. Uh, and in the, in the interest also of, uh, uh, of being consistent, that would be, uh, that would be, that would seem to be a reasonable suggestion. Uh, Major, is there anything else?
Uh, nothing more.
No more?
Thank you very much, sir.
Are there any other provisions that you have, uh, suggestions for? Uh, in terms of, what we, I, I, it, it turns out that the process we are undertaking here is trying to put meat on the bone of the, the BBL right now. Being the question of how do we implement, how do we administer, how do we regulate? And that brings us always to the question of the sharing of power. So, are there any other elements of the BBL that you see, that you would like to add or to go into further detail to clarify some of the provisions? Besides the, uh, the section that, uh, you have, uh, been explaining to the committee, Major?
Uh, with regards to the decommissioning of, uh, the DIA, because, uh, we believe that the, uh, decommissioning is a very crucial issue with regards to, uh, the combatant of the, uh, MLLE. Because there are cases that the, uh, the procurement of, uh, the, the arm of some members of the MLLE, that is personal procurement, then, uh, it go to some, uh, uh, that, uh, re-do, or they call it re-do, uh, personal, uh, family use. Then, uh, if, uh, if we can, uh, decommissioning, uh, these some members of the MLLE, uh, without, uh, without, uh, what do you call it? Uh, dating also the firearm of the part, this partisan armed group. So, uh, and those, uh, members of the DIA, uh, na hindi makapasok sa police force, wala silang mapuntahan. Then, uh, I would like to, uh, recommend that the, the, uh, the deactivation, the deactivation of the, uh, citizens' armed, the activation of the CAFGO, the citizens' armed geographical unit of the Armed Forces of the Philippines. That so that we can, uh, absorb some members of the DIA to be the replacement of the CAFGO. Because, uh, according, uh, we have six thousand, six thousand, uh, members of the CAFGO. Then, to, to deactivate the CAFGO and replace some members of, uh, the, uh, DIA to be replaced, ask the territorial defense of, uh, uh, to maintain the peace and order and equality. So, maybe that's, that's better. But before, uh, uh, going to that, we have to move on. We have to make, uh, training for the, to, to, for security. And, uh, part of the is that, uh, the mechanism, it should be clustered, it should be clustered. You not, uh, get up on the camp, so they have to undergo trainings, livelihood training, skills training, and, uh, different, uh, trainings in that, uh, areas of clustering. Because if we cannot agree, if we cannot, uh, address this, uh, sentiment of the combatants of the MLLE, this is the problem. No problem with the civil society of the, uh, of the MLLE. But the problem is the, the one holding the firearm. If we could not, uh, uh, give attention to, to the, maybe, uh, we cannot, uh, solve the insurgency or the conflict here in, uh, Magindanaw. So, we have to, uh, uh, look first into the mechanism of this, uh, Bangsa Moro Islamic Armed Forces. Because this, uh, are the, the crucial issues.
So, in your, in your view, all the combatants, all must be, uh, absorbed into one of the, either the uniform services and now the CAFGO?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, anyway, the CAFGO is only receiving a minimal, uh, uh, amount of total with, with, uh, with an allowance of two thousand seven hundred. And that, we have to activate the CAFGO, then replace the, for them at, because, uh, that's part of the, uh, short-term development. As long as these, that they are also part of the division, they are part of, uh, they are concerned with that, with the, uh, with the result of this. Because as, uh, I have seen the BBL, there is no, uh, concrete, uh, mechanism to address the, uh, combatant of, uh, this, uh, the, the MLLE. Because this is the, uh, problem. As, uh, based on his experience, that what you have said a while ago, the siege in Sabuanga, that is the result of, uh, the, the MLLE, past the firearm of the, is, uh, landon pastanila yung baril nila. So, they have that capability to, to fight against the government. Pero kung kontrolado na kung sila, we have that, uh, mechanism on how to control them under the EEP or under the PNT, so that's, that's more, uh, better. Itong kasi ang sinaka, dapat talagang bigyan natin ng concern, is itong...
Baka bumalik sa bandit, baka mapunta sa banditry. Pagka, basta na lang na decomission, uh, may pamehawak pang baril, wala nang iba makukang trabaho, baka ganun ang, baka ganun ang mangyari, is that, that is your main concern?
Oo, yun ang, ganun ang ano ko.
Okay, thank you, Major. Okay, Dato Antonio Kinok of the MLLE panel would like, uh, I think, has some, uh, reaction to the, uh, uh, suggestions made by Major Matalam?
I am here not as an official delegation of the MLLE panel, but as an observer. But, uh, I just like to make some observations on the just, uh, recent comment of or digestion of the gentleman from the military, that we do not legislate decommissioning. So, if you look at the BBL, there is no issue on the decommissioning of forces, because this is taken by another group. In the framework agreement on the Bangsa Moro and the comprehensive agreement, we have the independent decommissioning body. We have just... We have just formalized the official membership of the decommissioning body in Kuala Lumpur last 29 September. And the chairman of the decommissioning body is, uh, the Turkish Ambassador to the NATO. And the members are, one from Norway, one from, uh, Brunei, and then, uh, two from the Armed Forces of the Philippines. I think the general, retired general Leo Ferrer and retired general Ariel Bernardo, and we have from the MLF. Now, the, the issue here is, let us try to differentiate the situation. In the 1996 agreement, the MLF opted to join the military or the police. So, they were integrated into the Philippine National Police or into the Armed Forces of the Philippines. In the case of the MLF, we do not integrate. We create perde law and new police for the Bangsamoro. But it shall be under the Philippine National Police down the line. The appointment is bested in the PMP chief. But the selection is within the regional police, uh, director. There is a regional police board. So, the process is, we want to have a police force for the Bangsamoro that is professional, that is disciplined. And so, we can, we have to get their qualification on the merit system. If they are not qualified, sorry, we cannot get a police like that. Because we want to transform the Bangsamoro area into a peaceful community. The Armed Forces have per the agreement and in the, in the agreement, the Armed Forces have the control of external security. So, for the information of the body, we are going to have a ceremonial decommissioning within the next few days, maybe by November. I cannot be assured of the exact date. Now, this is already in the negotiation. Now, we have the so-called Joint Normalization Commission and we have the so-called Joint Peace and Security Team. In this Peace and Security Team, this is composed of, I think, 300 from the MLF, then from the Armed Forces of the Philippines, another 300, then from the police. These are the people that will be running after or interdicting criminal elements like the FAG. These are the private arm group and such other elements that are, uh, against the law. Now, in the case of the firearm, according to the, uh, the General Manager, some of these are personal. Now, we will have a mechanism that if you are qualified under present firearm, firearm law to possess firearms. Of course, when you say firearm, it must be small firearm. You are not authorized to possess a cannon. So, this will be processed. This is to eliminate the possession of firearms in people that are not qualified, are not supposed to be psychologically, uh, available to hold firearms. So, this is the, the process. Alongline, Mr. Chairman, with the Bangsamoro Basic Law, we have already the mechanism for the normalization, Major.
By Dato Quinoc, it is a different option that the MLF has chosen to, 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 uh, and, uh, perhaps, we will know, we will be able to discuss it further when the details of the transfer of power and the decommissioning proper are more clearly laid out. Uh, what are the trigger points? What are the, what, uh, I'm sure that there will be a phasing to it. Uh, and that there should be numbers so that there will be a, uh, a kind of performance test at each step of the way, whether or not you can proceed to the next one. Parang ganon?
Actually, yes, Mr. Sir, that is right. In our program for normalization, we have four major steps or milestones. And the first we already achieved, that was the, uh, signing of our agreement and the, uh, processing for the draft BBL. So, we are at that stage, at least with respect to this program. So, therefore, uh, the, the different steps that should be undertaken in the normalization, whether the security, social, econ, or the others, must also proceed accordingly. So, kaya po nabanggit earlier, the MLF is already prepared to start the ceremonial turnover. Because according to our program precisely, since we have met the first milestone, kasama po yong ceremonial turnover.
What are the other steps?
Uh, so, for, at least for, under our program for normalization, uh, we are still at phase one, as I said, uh, as brought about by the signing of the agreement, the turnover of the BBL. Uh, meron pa po tayong steps sa phase one, like the verification and validation inventory. So, verification, validation of the, uh, weapons and combatants of the MLF. To be, to be done by the independent decommissioning body. So, those are the things that have still, that still has to be, uh, undertaken in phase one before we can move to phase two. But for the information of the body po, under phase one for decommissioning, as mentioned, kailangan, na-organize po natin yong IDB. And if you've done that, you've been able to organize the decommissioning body already. Um, another step in phase one is the submission of the inventory to the independent decommissioning body of the weapons and the combatants. And then, there should be a verification process and finally, the ceremonial turnover. Those are the steps for decommissioning in this phase one. Ang phase two po, would start upon the completion of the validation of the, uh, MLF forces and weapons. And, uh, it will end also upon the ratification of the basic law. So, that's, that's, that's the timeframe for phase two. So, after that, we move to phase three. That happens from the time that the basic law has been ratified. And, and then, in phase three, it's also the, the milestone is the establishment and operationalization of the Bangsamoro Police Force. And finally, phase four, uh, when the police force has been organized and established, um, and two months prior to the signing of the exit agreement, which is scheduled also in 2016. So, yun po yong four phases. And, uh, along those different stages, there will be different steps to be undertaken.
In our previous briefing, Secretary Alex mentioned something about an ongoing process concerning the turnover of cool served and heavy weapons. Uh, what, what was he referring to? Where, where does that belong in your decommissioning, uh, mechanism?
Uh, if this refers to the weapons po of the MLF combatants, then it should be under decommissioning properly. I think what Secretary Alex was mentioning there was the organization of the decommissioning body. So, that's, that was the process then. But now that we've been able to identify the members and organize, we can now move on to the actual turnover, uh, to be initiated by the ceremonial turnover.
Who, who will do the inventory?
The independent decommissioning body, sir.
Okay, uh, and the list will be given to them by whom?
Uh, it will be the, the MLF, sir, who would give them the, and they will verify if, uh, encounter check whether the list...
So, it will be the commanders of the MLF who will provide the, uh, the inventory of weapons?
Well, the inventory itself, sir, would be done by the body, the decommissioning body. But as to the process of, the internal process with respect to the MLF, I'm really not in the position, sir, to answer that.
All right. Um, okay, actually, let us proceed, uh, we, I am in receipt of a position paper from the Office of the San, San Duniam Pandalawigan of, uh, Kidapawan City, in Kidapawan City. Rather, the resolution number 484. And we have here, uh, board member from the First District of North Patabato, Board Member Kelly Antao.
So, gusto ko po makatayo, ang matagal na nating hinangat na kapayapaan bisong salupang pangako. Kami po sa North Patabato, sa pamuno ng Amin Mahal ng Gouvernador, ay sumusuporta po sa usapimpan kapayapaan. Mula nang mafirmahan ang framework agreement on the Bangsamoro, inatasan po ng ating gouvernador, ang Committee on Human Rights and Peace and Order na mamuno po sa pagkaroon ng konsultasyon. Bumabag kami sa mga barangay, kasama po ang senior society organization. At kung ano ang tinanggip po ng ating mahal ng gouvernador, ay yun po ang bunga ng Amin pag ikot-ikot sa probinsya ng North Patabato. Lahat po ng ating ginagawa po ay sumusuporta ng probinsya ng Patabato. Dahil alam po namin, alam natin lahat, na itong isang pagkakataon, na mabigyan ng todo, o hindi ang matagal na nating minamikis o ang problema sa Mindanao, na kung saan tayo nagpapasalamat sa paninoon. Na ang Chairman on Peace, Reconzeleation, at, eh, Renegation ay mula sa Mindanao, nakabahagi na ng buhay niya ang problema sa Mindanao. At alam din natin na tayo magpapasalamat, na ang Chairman sa Committee on Lord of the Caron ay ang ating mahal ng Pilipino, Virgil and Marcos, na alam na alam niya ang kasaysayan ng bangsa, lalo na lalo na ang problema sa Mindanao. Mga kaibigan, mga Bangsamoro, we want to put entrepolo sa probinsya daw ng, of Patabato. It's, it's one hundred percent supported sa usapimpan kapayapaan. Babkus ito ay kila kailangan, na para po sa kataganan, para po sa kaunaran ng ating mamamayang. Our governor is here, together with our police. Honorable Lord Ureto Cabaya, Honorable Gudiyasutan, and the staff of San Duniam Pandalawigan, at Maranito Tanimata Saman, the Vice President of Carmen, representing the Leo's League of Patabato, Honorable Roger Talino, ay nandito po, upang ipakita sa sambayan ang Bangsamoro. Na ang North Patabato po ay sumusuporta po sa usapimpan kapayapaan. Para po tapos na linin, mahal na sir. Kami po ay nagpasanang resolution po, urging the two chambers, the chambers, the Senate of the Philippines and Congress, na magkaroon po, to cause the early passage of the Bangsamoro Basic Law. Ang alam po yon ay hindi ko napubaba sa in, dahil alam po natin na tayo lang ay humahangad ng kapayapaan. Yon po ang Amin po diisip sa North Patabato, we are one hundred percent supportive for the peace process by the structure of our governor. Thank you so much.
But of course, we raise issues, because we want this Bangsamoro bill passed. That is why you are helping by pointing out some gray areas. When the panel visited us, some were not able to address our concerns. That's why we put it in writing. But nonetheless, we want to manifest that these are valid concerns, but it does not mean that you are not supporting. Ang Amin lang, meron mang BBL or wala. Responsibilidad namin, lahat ng mga tagaming ganawan, na sumuporta, na magkaroon kami ng tunay na kapayapaan dito. Dahil kami naman ang maiiwan dito eh, kami naman ang makisinabang sa, kung ano mang merong resources o katahimikan na meron sa Mindanao. All those pressures, I must say, we are united on these, um, uniting and, uh, supporting all the peace initiatives of the government. But in our own ways, we can also do localized peace initiatives. Ganun ang ginagawa rin namin sa probinsya. Na hindi pwedeng iasa mo lang sa national, kung meron ka nang pwedeng gawin, locally, gawin mo na, address the social services, uh, address their needs, education, to health, to infrastructure and everything. So, that is our share in, in making sure that there is peace in North Patabato.
Very well, thank you. I think, uh, we are all of the same sentiment, that all of us are, uh, active participants in the search for peace. And not only do we want passage of the Bangsamoro Basic Law, we want the law that is passed to succeed. And that is in the most important consideration. And that is why we are going into as much possible detail as we can so that when it is enacted and when it is starting to be implemented, that all of the gray areas, all of the questionable, uh, administrative and regulatory, um, and, uh, all, all of the functions of the different bodies of the government, both Bangsamoro government and the national government are very clear as to how it is to be handled and what is the modality, what is the mechanism for this, uh, especially on the transition time. Uh, that is again, uh, it has been said, guarded in the details. I absolutely agree that the details will, it is, it is our work to make sure, to study, uh, all of those details. So, once again, to the end, uh, that we want this to succeed. We all want to finally achieve peace, in, not only in Muslim Mindanao, but in the entire republic. So, I now move on to, we will ask Anwar Lukas, the president of the Kutawato Bangsamoro Movement for Peace and Development Incorporated.
More on, if there's a suggestion or recommendation, more on Article 7, Section 8, and Section 9 of the Bangsamoro Basic Law. Uh, sa Usaping Pong Territory, may suggest, uh, po namen po, uh, po sede. As of now, the Autonomous Region and Muslim Mindanao Territory, that is the five provinces of the Magindanao, Lano Gerto, Hulo Tawi Tawi, and Basilan. At ito po ay natapos nung, uh, that is the proposal of the, uh, MLF, that is 1996 agreement. And what is the result of that certification of the Republic Act 1954? Ito na po ang tinanrabasan, Mr. Chairman, itong five provinces. Therefore, kung po sede ay, uh, yun na yan, ay, kung po sede na hindi na ito may sama sa prediceto. Na magkaroon ng prediceto dun sa additional territory ng, uh, dun sa proposal ng Bangsamoro Basic Law. Or, di rin jan territory sa proposal additional na predicit. Dun dun na man sa hindi, pwede sila maggawin, pero may proseso, magkaroon ng 10% of the registered voters for that province, eh, hindi matigohin sila. Uh, and then, yun lang po, yun lang po ang sameng, uh, pananaw, kung po sede wala ng prediceto sa limang probinsya, dahil nakaprediceto, nakapredi, nakaprediceto, eh, prediceto pa na, oh yan, yun prediceto na yan. At saka, malatitong utang na loob na natikita po namin, na yun din ay pinadhirapan ng mga partners ng MLF. At matikita natin na, sayang naman kung, uh, yun pinadhirapan nila, uh, kung baga, eh, mawala. And then, one of my suggestions, uh, Mr. Chairman, and then, the two per districting of Magindanao. Now, the total population of the Magindanao province based on 2010 changes, it's more than 900,000 people population. Then, pwede po itong gawin, uh, nine members of parliament, uh, district, and then, magkaroon ng, uh, nine parliamentary members sa bawat district sa nang districto. Kasi, yun ang, yun ang nakalagaw, besong, suong paragraph, the Section 8, Article 7, dun sa Bangsamoro government. Uh, yun po ang may suggestion ng Amin organization, Mr. Chairman.
What is this specific provision that you are referring to?
Uh, alin dito? Indicated po dun sa suong paragraph of the Section 8, Article 7, the Bangsamoro government. The minimum population of the one parliamentary district is 100,000. Therefore, the population, total population of provinces of Magindanao was in 2010, it's more than 900,000. Therefore, magkaroon sa nine, nine districts, uh, parliamentary districts, and then, magkaroon din sa ng representative ng nine parliamentary members.
So, you are, you are looking at the, uh, the size of the parliamentary district? I'm sorry, ma-hina yung ating isang system, hindi ko naintindihan lahat ng sinabi mo. I, what I caught was that the 100,000, uh...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Maybe, don't hold the mic so close.
Ah, yes, Mr. Chairman. Second paragraph of Section 8, Article 7 po.
Section 8, Article 7.
Second paragraph, second paragraph, the districting, yes. The minimum population of, uh, one parliamentary district is 100,000, 100,000 po. Then, the province of Magindanao, meron siyang more than 900,000 population. Therefore, magkaroon po ko, kung, kung ito ba'y recommendation, nagagawin nine districts, uh, nine parliamentary districts po ng Bangsamoro government, at magkaroon siya ng nine parliamentary members sa Bangsamoro government.
Uh, yes, you are, are you supporting that or are you questioning?
Supported po.
Ah, you are supporter.
Dun sa districting, because, uh, districting, uh, sa districting po, natikita ko po dun, the proposal is six districts sa province of Magindanao. And then, magkaroon sila ng clusterings, sa ilang municipalities, in one parliamentary district.
Okay, so, already we are arguing about the districting para tayo mananas ano, uh, that every, every... that every, every one hundred thousand should have a MP. Uh, that's another thing that will, that we, that is happening in the normal Congress, uh, in, uh, in that we are just increasing and increasing the numbers of, uh, of congressional districts, and it has to stop at some point. Is there again a limit to the number of districts that can be created? Because again, there is already a proposal for the nine hundred thousand population that instead of six, it should be ninety six. Uh, then by, in the language here, uh, akin to the language in the Constitution of two hundred fifty thousand, uh, is that how, how, how are we going to handle the, uh, the creation of new parliamentary districts in the future? Will there be a limit? Or will we just recognize the one hundred thousand? Because inevitably, as we have come, as has happened again in the Philippine Congress, we are constantly being, uh, being, uh, uh, receiving, uh, proposals for redistricting because of the increase in population. But again, it has become, it has become a continuing process which, which there seems to be no end. And we cannot have an infinite number of congressmen. So what would be, what would be the, uh, uh, how would you judge it? First of all, let us ask, how is it that we chose to have six parliamentary districts?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just, for the information of the body, the appendix that we see right now to the BBL, uh, is not yet in its, it is not yet a final form. Precisely this, this will still have to be reviewed by, of course, the legislators. But even at the level of the Transition Commission and also at the panel, we are in the process of actually redistricting what has been appended to this proposed BBL insofar as the proposed, uh, redistricting for the first parliament is concerned. Uh, in fact, uh, in the last meeting that we had in Kuala Lumpur, uh, there has, uh, a small group has been designated by the panel precisely to redistrict this appendix so that we could study carefully how to afford on the first twenty-four districts for this first parliament. Uh, that number twenty-four was arrived at on the basis of the current number of the RLA or the Armed Regional Legislative Assembly. And of course, also as a function of the percentages that have been determined for the different type of seats in parliament. So since we have agreed on, uh, in the number six seats, as the total, forty percent of that would be twenty-four. So that automatically means that at least for the first, uh, election in the, in the first parliament, there has to be at least twenty-four districts also because there will be single-member district representatives. However, this could be changed later by the parliament, uh, as they may do. Why? According to the changing circumstances, perhaps with respect to population or the need for more equitable representation.
Okay, then can I make a very strong suggestion?
Yes.
From the lessons learned, uh, in the House of Representatives and the Senate, is that you hold the number of parliamentary seats constant. Otherwise, it is an unending process and it usually mostly has to do with gerrymandering rather than representation.
Yes, sir.
And we all know that and that is what's happened in, uh, in, uh, in our experience. So that if you hold, and if you look at the, uh, the legislative body of other more developed democracies, they do not add districts. There are two hundred congressmen in the United States. That number does not change. There are two hundred senators in their Congress. The members of parliament of the United Kingdom do not change. The seats are the same. The number of seats are the same. They, they, the gerrymandering that they do is by redefining the district. Perhaps that might be allowable, but, uh, we cannot, we cannot continue just to add and add because if population is the sole basis, that is exactly what will happen. And that is exactly what is happening now in, uh, the Philippine Congress that dangdag lantayon ang dangdag. Because there is a constitutional mandate that two hundred fifty thousand is another congressional district. So I would take it the other way. Tanggali na yung population, decide on the maximum number of members of parliament who represent parliamentary districts. That way, that problem that you, I am telling you that we are experiencing, you will no longer experience.
Yes, sir, sir. We will take note of that.
That is a suggestion, a, a, that is a lesson learned from just your experience and being in the local government committee for the last four-plus years. So maybe you have, you can avoid some of the headaches that we have been going through.
Yes, sir, sir.
Mr. Lukas, is there anything else?
Uh, wala po sa, ano po, Mr. German, sa limang probinsya po na nagkaruna po ng predikto ng two thousand one, kung ito ba pwede na hindi na, hindi na, hindi na siya maga, hindi pa, hindi na siya maip- predikto, dun na lang ang predikto sa additional territory, dito po, additional territory, yun na dito ngayon sa Bangsamoro Basic Law.
Wala nang predikto sa?
Uh, yun po ang five provinces, dito ngayon, ang territory. Kasi the case, the certification of the Republic Act nineteen fifty four, yun po ang ressourta na sa mga ayon na matasakot sila na, na our territory. Ang sameng pananaw kung pwede na hindi na ito, hindi na ito magkaroon pa ng predikto, ang predikto dito na lang sa additional territory ng, ng dito ngayon sa Bangsamoro Basic Law.
So kung ano 'yung kasama na sa arm ngayon, hindi na kailangan ng predikto?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. German, kasi nagkaruna po ng predikto ng two thousand one. Yon po ang nasama dun sa peace agreement between the MNLE at saka DPA. At yun po ang naging ressourta ng certification of the Republic Act nineteen fifty four, kasi mga ayon dun sa batasin ng Republic Act nineteen fifty four.
Pero sinasabi ng ibang LGU executives, nag, uh, bumoto kami sa arm. Hindi kami bumuboto pa sa BBL, sa Bangsamoro. So, uh, iba, they, they, the, the, the vote that was taken, 'yung predicide, ay tungkol sa arm. Hindi pa natin naririnig ang voton ng mga tao tungkol sa Bangsamoro. And we still have to do that also because we're, the idea is that because we are creating a new body and this is going to repeal the, uh, law that created the arm and therefore, we have to start the process from the very beginning. As a matter of fact, there is an argument being made, sinasabi na ang predikto hindi lamang dapat sa mga area na specified kung hindi sa buong Pilipinas. At, uh, ito ay isang, uh, process, at ito ay, uh, nababanggit dahil sa ibang bansa, ganyan ang naging president, na pagka merong isang, uh, uh, probinsya na magreorganize, ang assumption is that affectado ang buong bayan, ang buong bansa. Kaya't lahat ng buong bansa ay kailangan it predicide. But that is another, that is one school of thought. The other school of thought, I suppose you represent the other side of that thinking. Well, anyway, it is a, it is a proposal that we will take on board, that we will note.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. German.
Uh, meron pa bang, uh, meron ba kayong gusto pang, uh, mapag-usapan at kaya tignan pa, uh, Mr. Lukas?
Uh, wala na po, marami salamat po, Mr. German.
Okay, thank you very much for, uh, that, uh, that discussion. I would like now to hear from Professor Hamid Najakahal, the former Undersecretary, the Deputy of Arms.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. So Professor Najakahal is Chairman of the Bangsa Samam Movement for Data Representation and Governance, and I am from Tawi Tawi. Before I ask for clarification on three important issues, I would like to tell the Honorable Chairman that on a personal note, we are very thankful to you because Tawi Tawi was created under Presidential decree three oh one because of your late father. And we want also to tell you that we are forcefully supporting the Bangsamoro Basic Law. Considering that your father was, has given us a legacy to Tawi Tawi, we would like to appeal to you that give him us this legacy by fully supporting the Bangsamoro Basic Law. There are three basic issues that I want to be clarified, and this may be addressed to me and the representative of the OPA. Number one is the, uh, fund of joint cooperation, fund of joint cooperation, and it specifically speaks of Sulusi and the Morogal. Now, in other provinces of the ARNM, the boundaries between provinces and municipalities are within the territory of the Philippines, and therefore, there is no problem. In the case of Tawi Tawi, our boundary to the south is Sabah, Malaysia. We have to be clarified because the Constitution speaks that we have still historical and legal rights over Sabah, which is basically said in the claim over Sabah. So the people of Tawi Tawi wants to be clarified, how should Sulusi be as a joint cooperation be related to our boundary with Sabah, Malaysia? Number two is the term Wali. Wali is a court term refers to leader. And in the definition of the Basic Law, it is a symbolic, uh, hand. But the authority to appoint is best said in the president. What is the logic? Why can it be given already Politic Minister instead of the president? That is a common. The third one is the system of education that we have in the ARNM. Today, we have already KKT twelve, kindergarten, basic education and higher education, so on and so forth. But it does not specify the provision of the KKT twelve in the proposed Education Act. Central to the peace agreement and the Basic Law is the Madaris education.
Three points that you are, you are making is how, is, how exactly do we handle the question of the claim of the Republic of the Philippines on Sabah as a, as a part of the, uh, of the Republic of the Philippines? And until that claim has been finally resolved, how do we handle the issue of Sulusi? Because I think in the Basic Law, uh, you are giving the, and to municipal water up to the exclusive economic zone of the Philippines, of the baseline, uh, basically. So, uh, do you have a, 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 a mechanism? Uh, because this is a very specific, siguro Tawi Tawi lang ang may problema na dito. Uh, so how do we, how, how do we handle that, uh, that joint cooperation, all of those aspects of, uh, of, uh, the exploitation of the, of, uh, the, not only the fisheries, but also the mineral reserves, uh, should there be any found? Uh, let's start with that one first.
Alright, so, um, under our agreement and also as detailed in our proposed, uh, Bangsamoro Basic Law, when we speak of zones of joint cooperation, we properly refer to an area in the Sulusi and the Morogal whereby there, there shall be shared or joint coordination and cooperation between central government and the Bangsamoro government with respect to three particular, uh, powers. And that involves, um, oh, let me just read from our proposed BBL. With respect to zones of joint cooperation, again, this is not territory. These are areas of functional jurisdiction that have been delineated so that on three particular subjects like movement of vessels, goods, and people, protection and enjoyment of fisheries and marine resources, and, uh, I forget the other one. Um, uh, here are the areas where in this bodies of water, there should be coordination and cooperation, protection of traditional fishing grounds, benefiting from the resources therein, ensuring interconnectivity, and, um, ensuring the exercise and granting of preferential rights. Now, these are the only areas where there are shared areas of jurisdiction between central government and Bangsamoro government. These have been carved out from the other waters of the Philippines, um, because this area unites the whole Bangsam- proposed Bangsamoro territory as one integrated whole. But again, we'd like to emphasize that this is not territory of the Bangsamoro government. This is still territory of the Philippine government, of central government, in fact. Now, this is in contrast with Bangsamoro waters, but Bangsamoro waters are not that the same as zones of joint cooperation because Bangsamoro waters are drawn, um, twenty-two point two-two-four kilometers from the coastline of any Bangsamoro territory. So ito po 'yung territory, but the zones which is a larger expanse of water is not territory. And in the delineation, it actually does not affect, uh, the boundaries of our waters in, uh, as part of national territory because in any case, the Bangsamoro is part of the Philippines. Now, how does this affect for our claim over Sabah? In fact, uh, and in relation actually to the entire peace process, uh, because I'd like to mention again, uh, at the back of our heads, who kasi is the participation of Malaysia in the, as facilitator in this process? So maybe it's better to integrate the response that way. So our official policy natin po from the very beginning is that we've never, uh, uh, we've never let go of our claim over Sabah. Even if, uh, we have been under the facilitation of Malaysia, wala pong kahit anong, our claim is the same and we still reiterate that, we are still enforcing that, but we should follow, of course, the, the rules of international law. So that is how we will proceed with our claims over Sabah and nothing in this process, particularly in relation to delineation of waters and zones of joint cooperation, affects our claim. We will pursue that in accordance with the rules of international law. So, uh, yun po is something that we have to be able to reiterate and clarify.
But, but the, I think the point that, uh, that is being illustrated here is that, uh, because the, the territorial waters of the Philippines and hence, the Bangsamoro waters to include Tawi Tawi will now already conflict with the claims of Sabah because the baselines are crossing over, are, are, are intersecting the same as in Indonesia, um, and the same as now in Sabah. Uh, how then does the residents of Tawi Tawi regard their own, the, 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 um, Bangsamoro waters? Is that exclusive of all our claimed area? Is that exclusive of all our claim area? In other words, may they exploit any kind of, any rich, any wealth from the sea? To what extent are they allowed to do that? Is it our claim of the exclusive economic zone of 12 miles or 22.4 kilometers? Or does it, do we defer to the claim of Sabah as to their own baseline?
That now separates the sea properly of the Philippines and what is being claimed by Malaysia as part of their international waters. I think that was a treaty between the United States government and the British government way back during the colonial period. And until now, that is somewhat being observed. Although we are disputing the validity of that under our official claim under international law. And dito po sa pagdelineat ng extent of water, there will be an official body that will be created.
I don't think it was an agreement here in the US. It was a leash that was usurped by the British and passed on. It was a leash that they were paying to the Sultanate of Sulu. Because the Sultan of Sabah had given, the Sultan had given that property to the Sultanate of Sulu as a form of gratitude for his support during a rebellion.
Yes, sir.
But that leash was usurped then by the British when they took over Malaya. And when they created the Republic of Malaysia, they passed on ownership to the Republic of Malaysia, which of course we contend is illegal. So is that the final, is that the way that we are going to handle that?
Well, I am not really familiar, Mr. Chair, about the exact, what that line is being called right now. But if I remember correctly, there is that demarcation line in the sea between Sabah and Tahu Tawi that have been artificially drawn. And we are, as I said, I'm not quite sure. I have to look it up again. But I think we are disputing that precisely. But since we have processes to go through to be able to successfully dispute that, that line will have to be observed as of now. So even in the determination of the water, again, as I said, there will be an official body that will be constituted.
The demarcation line is essentially the halfway point between the two land masses. If, no, sorry. If the baseline and the claim of baseline do not intersect, the demarcation line does not apply. The demarcation line only applies when the two baselines intersect and we take the halfway point. That is the, that has been the modus operandi that we have come to with Malaysia.
So, in the determination of the extent of the waters in the zone, at least for now, that will have to be observed. But yung final configuration, if that is the question, need to determine patoyan of an official body composed of NAMRIA, the ENR, and representatives of the Bangsa-Moro government to determine the exact coordinate of up to where this area.
It's actually a point that never came up, but I think it would be very specific to the island provinces. I think the next point that the professor made was about the Wali. And exactly the definition of what their functions are. There is also the constitutional question that he is essentially, the Wali is essentially a religious position. Because as I understand it, it is actually Wali Allah, which is the friend of Allah. So that brings a religious color to that person. So then, how does that resolve between the church and state provisions? And the specific question by the professor as to what his function truly is? Because the Wali is as defined in the law. It is a ceremonial function.
... functions except to act as the state or as the ceremonial representation, siguro, of this autonomous government. In fact, when you look at the provisions on the Wali, that provision does not even have a salary. The Wali would just be given allowances. And also, in relation to the other provisions, there is actually just one other section where the Wali is given an actual governance function. And that is in relation to the dissolution of the parliament when there is a vote of no confidence. But the provision there actually mentions that the Wali, true to his nature as a titular ceremonial head, only declares that parliament should be dissolved and call for the election. But that is minimiserial. There is no discretion involved there. Because upon the vote, the Wali does not have any choice but to declare the dissolution of parliament and call for the election. So really, in this proposed BBL, that is the only actual official governance function of the Wali. But for others, then he is just envisioned to be this ceremonial head who might lead flag ceremonies or give opening remarks or receive guests and whatnot. But really, only in that ceremonial capacity. But what its particular functions will be is not yet provided here. So that should be determined by the parliament later, what these ceremonial functions are. But the guidance for the parliament with respect to the extent or breadth of the power of the Wali should be that it should be purely ceremonial, representative or symbolic, and no discretion whatsoever.
Why did the panels, both panels feel that there was a need to have such a position?
Mr. Chair, I think this had something to do with the practice of many parliamentary governments where there are actual heads of government and then there's a figurehead or a ceremonial head of state. So to be able to be consistent with that practice, it was agreed that we could also opt to have this figurehead or ceremonial head.
Does the Wali necessarily have to be a Muslim?
No, Mr. Chair. It only says here that the Wali must be an eminent resident of the Bangsa-Moro.
Must be, yes.
So there is actually no requirement that he has to be a religious leader or become a Muslim per se. He just has to be an eminent resident of the Bangsa-Moro. And as far as appointment is concerned, this has to be confirmed by consensus of the Bangsa-Moro parliament.
I wrote your last point down, but now I cannot read my own handwriting. So maybe you can repeat the last third point that you brought about the system of education that we have for ARMM. This actually came up in the first briefing that we had. As to the system of education, not only the actual system of the education, but the administration of the educational system came into question as to who will administer the SUC? Or will universities or colleges that are created by the Bangsa-Moro government, will they be considered state universities or colleges? And then now, onto the question of the professor as to what will be the system? Will it follow strictly what DEP Ed and TED are, the curricula that DEP Ed and TED are following? Or will there be differences? And how will those differences be determined?
Mr. Chair, so I would like to read that in relation to the listing of exclusive powers. So if you look at the listing of exclusive powers, we will see there that one of the areas where the parliament is empowered to enact its own legislation would be in education. And that would mean that the regional autonomous government actually can enact its own laws with respect to the educational system in these places. And that would include, Mr. Chair, as you mentioned, creation of universities or schools. But as to its appellation or whether it should be still referred to as state universities, I think that would have to be clarified later on. But with respect to the integrated system of education, if I may be allowed, Mr. Chair, to read. Although it is an exclusive power and yes, the Bangsa-Moro government can on its own organize its own educational system, there is guidance in the BBL on Article 9, Section 13, which says that the Bangsa-Moro government shall establish, maintain and support as a top priority a complete and integrated system of quality education and adopt an educational framework that is relevant and responsive to the needs, ideals and aspirations of the Bangsa-Moro. So this means, Mr. Chair, that the Bangsa-Moro government should be able to determine its own, the educational system according to its own needs. But does that mean that it should not be correlated in any way with the national system of integration? Because that would have implications as to the transfer of students and the uniformity of curricula according to the principles here embodied. Although there is that power, kailangan pa rin po nilang makipagcoordinate somehow with the National Department of Education for practical considerations of the movement of students and teachers and integration of curricula.
Was there any discussion as to what role, possible role Madrasas could play in the educational system? To have as an adjunct perhaps to the national educational system?
With respect to the Bangsa-Moro, Mr. Chair, there is an additional listing of exclusive powers that specifically addresses madraths or Madrasas. And it provided here that the Bangsa-Moro shall supervise to an appropriate ministry accredited madraths in the Bangsa-Moro. It doesn't say, Mr. Chair, whether or not it should be integrated into the non-madrath educational system. Although I think that there is nothing that stops the Bangsa-Moro parliament from making it part of the integrated system. Since there's a mandate to make that integrated system of quality education anyway.
Because in other countries with large Muslim populations and population centers, they maintain the national system of education, but they incorporate and recognize and accredit Madrasas for the Islamic teachings of those who are followers of Islam. And that is the system that they have done. And it seems to work. Because having to incorporate Islamic teaching in what is already the regular curriculum might be a little difficult. And again, the state system of education is not prepared in terms of teachers, in terms of facilities, whereas the Madrasas already have their own available teachers and their facilities in the mosque usually where they can discuss Islamic teachings with the students. So, Professor, is there anything else that you would like to add? There's no doubt that we are opting for quality education. And that is our direction. But my specific question is, why did the OPAP or the preamble of the Basic Law did not include the national system of education under the K to twelve system? I believe that this should be incorporated and then enhance the Madrasa education into the system, which is very important to the Muslims. And then there is this issue again. If you look at the provision of the BBL, the parliament is authorized to establish a tribal university. Why tribal? This is very divisive. Why can't we just recall it Bangsa-Moro University? Because if you call it tribal, that is very divisive. Even for example, the term Lumad. This term never existed before. This is a creation of theology to further divide the people of Mindanao. There's no such thing before as Lumad. This is a new term. So today, we are speaking of Lumad indigenous communities and so on and so forth. And when we speak of Lumad, we always feel to be reliable. But there are Badao, Tahu Tawi, elsewhere. So this is a Lumad. Even Tausog, Sama, even Maguindanaw, Iranon, a Lumad. In its sense. So I think the term Lumad is irrelevant in this issue. So yung tribal university, if I may suggest, Mr. Chairman, if that could be done, it should be called Bangsa-Moro University, but not Tribal University. We maintain, we try to maintain a national standard in terms of formal education. But in areas where the local population chooses to support a Madrasa for the teachings of Islam, then that can be, although it can be part of, it can be a part of the educational system where, in those areas where they are designed. And I think the professor put forth a good solution. And as I said, this seems to be the experience in other places, mostly in European countries with large population centers, Muslim centers of population.
Okay, your suggestion to integrate a K to twelve educational system in the Bangsa-Moro. So that is something that the Bangsa-Moro will have to decide for themselves later on. If that is the type of educational system that for them would also work, then the Bangsa-Moro Basic Law is actually allowing them to do that. And as far as integrating the Madraths into this formal system, that is also something up for the determination of parliament later on. And also, I'd just like to make a quick clarification that OPAP is really not for the draster of the Basic Law. We have a Bangsa-Moro Transition Commission. And they are the framers of this BBL. We are here to, like most of us, to support with formulation of our proposed Basic Law. So I'd just like to clarify that for the record so that for the information also of the body.
Yeah, you would like to say something? Mr. Chairman, the Lumad is used by the Christians from Cebu, meaning born in the community. But we resent that because the word is, in English, "law" is "lower" and then "mad" is "siraulu". So we don't like that. But we remain an indigenous person. The Muslims, when we crafted ITI 71, I was with the SRA, the Social Reform Agenda of President Ramos, there were Muslims there. But some, sad to say, some Muslims also do not want to be called indigenous persons. But if you look at it, remove your religion, you are an IT, just like me. I am not a Christian, I am not a Muslim, I am a Blaan. Now, in regards to the tribal university, that is the claimor of some of the tribal people, the indigenous people, that where will they practice their customs and traditions? Now, alongside with the Madrasa, you have your Madari, which teaches Islamic values and culture. But here is an indigenous person mixed with the Western education. It is a, they don't know if he is an IT or not because he's only taught English. He speaks Tagalog. Tagalog is foreign to us. English is very foreign to us. But yet, we are foreign because this is a part of imperialistic injunction. You know, learn the language, learn the dialect, you follow him. But we want to preserve our culture. You know, Mr. Chairman, the Blans are about 500 or 400,000. But there are only less than 100,000 or 50,000 who speak like me, who have no registered religion with the sect. Because even among the Christians, I said, I cannot join you because there are too many of you. I remain my tribe, I remain a Blan, and I'll die as one. Even the Milet, even the Milet, Ms. Wari tried to convince me to become Islam. I said, Chairman, I cannot. Chairman Murad said, brother, become Islam. I said, I cannot because everything in me must remain with me until my dying day. Doctor Danz, yes, you wanted to add something?
In non-ARMM territory, I am talking about the 96th Government Center in Samuanga, Samuanga City. As you well know, Samuanga City doesn't want to have anything to do with the arms. It just wants the property. I hope the BBL should be able to capture that the assets of the arms will be with the Bangsa-Moro for the discretion of the Bangsa-Moro people. And nothing herein should include that the city government on which it is located will have the right to purchase it. Because the 96th Government Center is strategic to the three island provinces. And if we have the vision of an educational system that will be to address the needs of the education of the three island provinces, then Samuanga City is the most ideal. And we have the asset there. This was the vision of Mayor Admiral Romolo Espaldón. We bought the property for $5,000 per square meter. If, I may say, if what was intended for the arms, then therefore, what the institution that is inherited should be the Bangsa-Moro. No more, no less, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Well, actually, different LDU there, one of the central pillars of this Basic Law is the concept of self-determination. So I suppose that in the end, that those determinations will be, we will find as to the results of the plebiscite. Samuanga City is precisely an example of that where the plebiscite spoke that Samuanga would not be included. So again, that issue has come up since. But we leave it to the local populace to decide on those matters. Okay, so I would now like to call on, from the Takurong, the carrier, Father Antonio Huell.
So, the position of Archbishop Cardinal is very publicly, very clear, is in support of the peace process. And since the BBL is the output and the product of the peace process, therefore, he is also in support of the BBL. In fact, he was present at the signing of the Framework Agreement in Malacanm. So, I, well, under the Archbishop, please, Archbishop, I looked into the law itself, I read the whole thing. And regarding the general principles, I think it's beautiful, great. The general principles are very good. And then I tried to look into the details of the law. It's so long, I cannot remember all the details. But as the Nortabato delegation was saying, there were some areas that we might need some clarification. Right now, for example, by listening, I am clarified about the role of the Wali, which I have read there. But another clarification perhaps is in the part of boundaries, the parliament can do some changes. the parliament can do some changes, adjustments in the boundary. I am not sure what this means. Does this mean adjustment of the boundaries within the Bangsa Moro or adjustment of the boundaries outside? I mean, expansion of the Bangsa Moro? So things like that, these are the things that need some clarification. And certainly, I guess, Tangres will look into the details. But certainly, the, the, the general principles are very beautiful, are good. So it's just the, the details of the law will, will be embodying these general principles. So I am giving an example during the boundary.
So concerned, uh, because in principle, I do not think you will find anyone who is against peace. And if there is, if this, if this is an opportunity for that, then we must all work very hard to make it come true. But to make it come true, the specific, the specific, uh, modalities of implementation and administration and the, again, the sharing of power between the national government and the Bangsa Moro government have to be very, very precisely laid out. And that is why, again, uh, Father, it is whatever details, uh, insights you might have, uh, besides the general principles of the Bangsa Moro Basic Law, we would very much like to hear it.
Parliament can adjust the boundaries of the Bangsa Moro. So that's what I would like to ask. What does that mean? Boundaries within, boundaries outside, or expansion?
Again, for example, the boundaries of the parliamentary district will have to be defined by parliament, number one. Uh, they have the power to create LGUs, uh, up to the municipal level. So again, those boundaries will be specified by the parliamentary, by the parliament of the Bangsa Moro Parliament. But they, they cannot extend or even diminish the area that is defined as the Bangsa Moro.
Yes, thank you. That's one thing I, I, I was about to talk to you about.
Uh, BBL, particularly in Article 5, which is Section 3, Number 67, po 'yung residence to the power of the parliament to alter the political boundaries, you know? Uh, as sent on, this only pertains to the constituent areas and the areas that are, that have voted to become part of the Bangsa Moro. So this will not affect the borders or boundaries of LGUs that are outside or not part of the Bangsa Moro territory. And it's also, uh, good to be reminded that when parliament chooses to do this, meron pong plebiscitary requirement. So it's not as easy as passing a law. There must be a plebiscite that must approve the changes that parliament will do with respect to the boundaries of this LGU, like what we do with other LGUs under our local government code. So, hindi naman po sa matter of enactment lang, it has to, it has to win in a plebiscite called for that purpose. Also, with respect to local governments and the constituent units of the Bangsa Moro, it is also good to be reminded of the provision in Article 6 on intergovernmental relations. It says therefore, that privileges enjoyed by local government units under existing law shall not be diminished unless otherwise altered, modified, or reformed for good governance according to a law. So therefore, meron pong limitation under this BBL for the Bangsa Moro with respect to local government. Hindi po nila, hindi ganun sila kapri. There has to be a solid good governance basis to do this. So therefore, the BBL, to a certain extent, is providing safeguards so that maiwasan natin 'yung possible abuses. If those are, if that along the, if we are thinking along that line. So, kailangan po for good governance purposes lang. And it should be pursuant to a law enacted by parliament and must be supported by a plebiscite.
Uh, before the joint committee here, here today, um, just to be absolutely sure, is there anybody else who would like to, to bring their, bring their idea and their insight? Yes, please, go ahead.
Because while in the local government code of, 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 it is subject to 2163, it is provided there. But it is been acknowledged that, uh, the parliament, the Bangsa Moro Parliament can pass its own local government code. If ever that this, uh, the, the, the parliament can pass, I, I would like to suggest that there must be a mechanism in the BBL to ensure that we settle boundaries among, uh, within, within the provinces of, of the Bangsa Moro and that of outside of the Bangsa Moro. Because we have one experience with that of Sultan Kudarat, where in the Sangunian Panilawigan of Sultabato, and that of Sangunian Panilawigan of Sultan Kudarat, had a dispute between the boundaries in Colobio and Tulunan. It took us a lot of time. And then eventually, we decided to find a place in the court. And we don't want, want that happen with the Bangsa Moro and that of outside of the Bangsa Moro. So there must be a mechanism on how to settle this issue, the boundaries between, uh, the Bangsa Moro and that of outside of the Bangsa Moro territory.
As, uh, as it has been suggested, now, um, the, I think there, there is a valid point here because all, uh, all adjacent LGUs, usually municipalities and provinces, have a boundary dispute. And for the simple reason that era includes boundary, uh, area. Uh, again, there are, so the, the possibility that the boundaries as defined by one LGU is different from the boundary defined by the Bangsa Moro, what is the mechanism for us to resolve that? The mechanism between LGUs is to strive first between LG, between the LGU, to decide between them, the Sangunians meet, and they try to come to an agreement. If not, then it goes to court. But, uh, again, and this is a slightly different situation. Do we have a, uh, mechanism for, to resolve such issues?
Uh, in, uh, actually, we do, we do have this mechanism here. It will be part of the intergovernmental relations mechanism. Uh, if I may be allowed to read, this IGR relation, IGR mechanism is precisely, uh, uh, put in place to address disputes and issues relating to the intergovernmental relations. So that would include relations between the Bangsa Moro and central government, and by extension, also to local governments within and outside. I think the wording and the language of this provision with respect to the IGR mechanism is actually flexible enough to accommodate even disputes with respect to boundaries. Now, I'm not saying that they already have a set of rules to apply to address this dispute, but the guidance here is that the, the, the way they should resolve it should be, uh, through regular consultation, continuing negotiations, and in a non-adversarial manner. So these are very loose guidance, uh, as of now, which means that we, there, we, there is a need for, uh, a more defined set of, uh, rules or procedure to address possible conflicts such as that. Now, as to what law will apply, because this is an IGR, uh, issue, then, uh, there should be reference to national law.
What do you mean by IGR?
Intergovernmental relations.
This is where you have a problem. You're, you're, you're putting yourself, the Bangsa Moro government in the same footing as the Republic before bringing up to the, bringing it up to the highest level. And even then, I believe, uh, after the local government, at the local government level, dapat eh, ano na na. We can, we can elevate it to the court at that point. Um, because it is not necessarily a political, uh, adjustment or a political accommodation, but a legal one. Uh, where we go back into the, into the records and see what in fact is the definition, where is the boundary between one LGU and this, in this case, Bangsa Moro. So, again, that, you, you, I, I, I think as a general principle, it would be a good idea to try to resolve all of these issues at the lowest possible level. Number one, it will take so much longer because ah, ah, bago ba ba ulit. If we, if what is possible, we give, uh, the best chance of resolution will be if the decision is made at the lowest possible level. Uh, that way, hindi masarado magulo, hindi masarado matagal. And the, it, it will hear all of the concerns of the local, local populace that is affected by the question before, uh, whatever this, um, body or mechanism will be.
I have another question. Thank you, Senator. Uh, being not on the content of the deal, but in the process. Because we know, we know as an ordinary person that, uh, important legislation will be called for due in implementing rules and regulations issued by the Office of the President. So in this sense, do we need to have a implementing rules and regulations? Because had we have, I believe it will delay again the implementation of the Bangsa Moro Basic Law. With the Office of the President, we still have issue in implementing rules and regulations or the implementation of the Basic Law? Or it's not?
And, uh, that's, that's why all of these implementing rules and regulations will still be required. Okay? Yes, Professor?
Uh, assuming, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, the BBL has been already ratified and the president has already appointed the members of the Transition Authority. Uh, generally, many of favor, I'm saying, if, uh, the election will be banned in 2016, that would be too short for the Transition Authority to go on. It's very a possibility that, uh, that we, the parliament will not grant the election by 2016. Instead, extend it at least, uh, for three years before the regular election.
It is anathema to our general principles that we do not have elected. So we want to get to the point where we have elected representatives as quickly as possible. To have unelected representatives for three years is, again, anathema to our general principles of, uh, uh, the representation, uh, suffrage, all of the basic, uh, all of the basic concepts of, uh, democracy.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make some adjustments to that. Actually, for, uh, we have actually provisioned in our, uh, proposed Basic Law that in the, that actually categorically says that the BPA shall be dissolved upon the election on May 26. So we really have to, uh, it, in other words, the process with respect to the BPA will have to make do with, uh, with the transition period that we have. And that is why, uh, of course, we'd also appreciate some of the efforts of our legislators, you know, to, to try to fast that and keep, uh, and, and keep to that schedule. But again, just to be very clear, even in our proposed BBL po, the BPA will be dissolved immediately upon the election and qualification of the first Bangsa Moro Parliament. And that first regular election shall be held on the fir, on May 26.
Yes, uh, as a matter of fact, most of the proposals, if not all, the proposals that I've heard will be, was, were to shorten the time where the transitional government is, uh, is sitting and to, uh, as, as quickly as possible, transition, uh, to the elected representative in parliament. Again, because of our, uh, 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 our hesitation to have for too long a time a non-elected, uh, parliamentary or, or a non-elected body running, uh, the administration. Uh, because again, uh, the, the concept and principle of self-determination is central to everything that we are doing here and, uh, in creating the Bangsa Moro and in passing the Bangsa Moro Basic Law. So with that, uh, if there are no other comments that want to be made, if no one else is wants to the floor. First of all, I would like to thank you, all of those who participated here, there, today, uh, for all the comments and all of the, uh, suggestions and all of the discussions that you have, uh, that we have, uh, allowed today and partaken in today. It has been very constructive and we will come away, the committee comes away with a great deal more knowledge